Welcome to the June 1st meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. This is a special meeting, we're working on our 2017-2018 budget. Councilmember LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, if y'all bow with me. Lord, we thank you, thank you for all the blessings in our lives. Thank you for Murfreesboro, for the employees, for the citizens, the public safety folks. Lord, we hope that you'll be with us tonight in the decisions that we have to make and the discussions that we have. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for Rick. Preacher.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
I want to welcome everyone here today. We've got, this is our second round of our budget hearings in true to mayoral form. I'm gonna juggle up the agenda a little bit because we do have another group of elected officials who are in the audience. We have our school board, who, several members of our school board who are here, so I'm gonna ask that our city schools will go first, and that way y'all don't have to wait for everything else. And we'll put, we'll still put legal at the bottom, if that's okay Craig? All right.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for your support, and I do want to thank our school board for being here tonight. They are a tremendous blessing to this community, and as you know, represent this city well, as you represent it well. I want to talk a little bit about some of our successes this year, and I want to talk about our partnerships that we have first with our city government. Our Parks and Rec connection remains very, very strong with what we're using our schools for, for everything from basketball to softball. Our partnership with our Murfreesboro Police Department, you are certainly well aware of, and we could not do what we do without them. This year, we were able to partner with them when the First Lady of Tennessee came for the book patrol, and we were very proud of that. Lineball just opened ground for their new technology center on Hobgood, and we really think that that'll be a real asset to all of the community, but particularly to the children and the families in that area. The planning commission, the water department, the city administration continue to partner with us. They are in our schools, you are in our schools, reading to our children, talking with their children, and really, we really appreciate that. And finally, a new partnership is with our fire and rescue. We are actually piloting a curriculum for second grade next year with them, and we expect that to expand throughout the city. Partnership with MTSU continues to be very strong. The Confucius Institute, we now have three Chinese teachers in our schools, two during the day and one in the afternoon in ESP. As you know, we take all of our students, except for our kindergarten students, I was talked out of that a couple of years ago, to the basketball game, and we also take about thirteen hundred, all of our third graders, to the MTSU farm. We are expecting that partnership to become even stronger with a new partnership with their College of Basic and Applied Sciences. Our farm-to-school program this year established five greenhouses, and that is connected to our nutrition department with what we do with the junior chef program, and I appreciate the fact that Councilman Shacklet was one of our judges at our finale of that program. So we're excited about that. Our district was one of two school districts to receive funding from the state for what's called ACES, which is Adverse Childhood Experiences, so we have started implementing that grant, and you will hear more about that with our partnership with the community that will happen next year. We have had thirty-one classes build a house inside of the Hobgood gym, and some of you have seen that. We're excited about that program, that's called If I Had A Hammer, but again, it goes along with the whole idea of students knowing why they're learning what they're learning, so it has to do with applied learning. John Pittard and Discovery were named state demonstration schools for their work with social-emotional learning. Robin Newell was named the Middle Tennessee Grand Division Principal of the Year, and we have Tammy Garrett, who this year has recently been named the Principal of the Year for District Twelve, which is the Mid Cumberland region, so she will be moving on to the state. Mary Lee Smith was named the Mid Cumberland Coordinator of the Year for Coordinated School Health, and Siegel was awarded first place in the Adventure Convention, and will be moving on to national competition. The students there have developed a swing that is, will be very beneficial to our children who have motor difficulties. So those are some of our successes this year, and we could not do that without your support. When you look in your, your budget book that we give you each year, under improvements, you will notice that about four or five pages back, there is a page that talks about goals that permeate the budget. What we did is we looked at our last two years of budgets and our prospective budget this year, and these are the areas that we really found that we were targeting. Meeting the needs of diverse student learners, and we can talk about that a little later. Providing an environment that invites the best quality personnel. Education is really a competitive business now, and so we want the very best, and we are able to recruit the best, I think, because of what we have done in our system as far as being very collaborative. When you look at our mission statement, it talks about collaboration, and we live that every day. Providing resources for student and employee growth, so it's not enough any longer for our students to grow. Our employees also have to grow in order to meet the changing student population. And then finally responding to state and federal changes or requirements. So when you look at our budget and, and what we're adding to our budget and what we're requesting, you will see that those, those threads really run true. If you look over at what we're asking then for 2017-2018, you'll notice that there is a raise there. This is comparable to, if you've heard the Governor at all, you know that he put money into the budget for raises. Those are for BEP positions, so we are outside, every school district is outside of the, what the state says it takes to run a school district. You have such things as an ESL counselor, position as counselor, ESL teacher. We are seeing about a growth of a hundred to a hundred and forty new ESL students. These are students that do not have English as their native language a year. We're also seeing an increase in our special needs population, so that is the reason you have the CDC that stands for Comprehensive Development Class, and then two special ed pre-K classes. We are looking at, starting this year with more of our CDC students, our special needs students than we've had in the past, so that is the reason you're seeing that. The rest of the positions that we're requesting there have to do with meeting the needs of, of our individual students, and so that is what you have before you. And I'm gonna turn it over at this point to Mr. Anderson. I explain the why, he explains the plot.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Good evening. Thank you for having us here. Budget overall, we've projected a balanced budget, which our school board has approved. In it, we have seventy-five million, five hundred and ten thousand dollars on our general purpose operating budget. Of that, we're going to be using some fund balance dollars to make it balance. We have, right now, a hundred and forty students more than we had last year at the end of the year. I don't know if you know the history, the district over the last twenty-seven years has grown on average a hundred and forty-five students on average, so we're pretty much at the average, but we do expect it to be up, up more than that next year because we are already, from the time I built the budget till the time now, we are already approaching within about ninety students of the hundred and forty growth. So we expect to have a better number at that time. Overall, our budget increases eight point five eight percent over last year. That seems to be in line with the other districts because of all the extra pieces that keep coming to the, to our districts to serve, all the extra parts of our community. Tax-wise, county taxes, we have projected an overall increase of total county taxes, meaning sales and property tax, of being five point oh-two percent from our current estimate, and we are showing three point eight percent in sales tax and three point seven eight percent in property taxes. So overall, we're looking at a BEP increase, that's Basic Education Program, funding from the state, to be up three point one seven percent. So revenue-wise, we do look for additional revenues, and of course, it's offset on our expenditure side. The thing about this year's budget that's, that's a little different than past years is we're not asking city council for any additional monies for our operating budget. What we're asking for is in our capital outlay budget. In your budget book is a section on capital outlay. If I could get you to turn to that page, I'd like to try to explain what we've done on this. In the third column from the right, it says included in board budget, and in that column are all the things that we have included in our operating budget. The next column requested from the city, we're requesting one million, four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of capital outlay from the city to help us cover the things that we do not have covered in our general purpose operating budget. Any amount towards that would be very appreciated to make, make us be able to do some of these capital outlay projects that we have in mind. How we determine that was, any more short-term project that's not really part of a building structure we put in the, in the school system budget, and anything that's really attached to the building or longer term, buses that'll run anywhere from fifteen to eighteen years, we put in the request from the city. So basically overall, our general purpose budget is balanced based on that first column I pointed out to you, and we're asking the city council to please consider funding anything in that next to last column that you see fit to be able to fund for us to cover those capital outlay needs. Dr. Gilbert, is there anything else you'd like me to discuss about our budget before? Okay, thank you. So anyone has any questions about what we've put together for you?
So the, in your capital outlay, the, the blue is where we've got critical, that's the critical you're, you're requesting, and then the yellow, which has the total, is, I guess the other two point four is the non-critical items?
Yes, the, anything that's in a white mark is, we consider something we can postpone. For example, a roof, we can keep patching a roof, that's why it's in be a white column. Anything in blue is something that we see as a, a much more critical need right now to be able to fund.
Okay. Dr. Gilbert, how are we long-term planning? Where are you thinking, when we talk about capital, when will we need our next, our next location, our next school?
Yes, we plan to open up, well, the need for another school to open up two years from this next school year, so two summers from now. So we need to get the land established, what piece of land we're gonna have, and start through the process. So we would need to get some money at some point in the next budget year to do the purchase of land and the architect and engineering fees, and then the major part of that money would come in two years from now.
I believe that Mr. Lyons has lived in our capital. We, we've had many conversations, actually, we do them on a monthly basis about what our needs are, and I really appreciate your time, so Mr. Lyons is certainly well aware of what our timeline is. As you know, the growth on the west side of town is, is where we're looking, so to relieve Case and Lane, Scales, overall Creek, that's what we're seeing the need.
Case and Lane, I'm sorry, Scales is going to be right at the edge of total capacity this year, and overall Creek is got this year where within about fifty students of being in capacity, and Case and Lane is rapidly approaching that with the new apartments coming in across the street from there. So the west side of town is definitely experiencing tremendous growth once again.
We, we feel like at the east side of town with the appropriation for Black Fox that will come online this fall, so you're looking at ten additional classrooms there, we feel like that that will help that side of town. Reese Rogers, surprisingly, last year was versing at the same, so we'll see how that works, but we feel like that we can shift some classes, some of our CDC classes, for example, we feel like that we can shift, and that will help that.
I was listening to the Governor speak the other night, and he was referring to the situation we have with the buses and seat belts, and I know you've got three buses in here right now. Do these figures reflect seat belts, and if they don't, then do we have any idea what, what the demand would be or what the pricing would be, should the legislature just deem that it's appropriate for us to go that direction? And I guess the other question is, have you took into consideration what manpower would be required in order to get the kids strapped in once they get on the bus and, and that type thing? Would, would be looking at aids on every bus, or what would we be looking at?
The, the prices in here are current prices that we have from the bus manufacturers that we can purchase the bus at. It does not include seat belts in it. We're under the impression seat belts will not pass, obviously, this year. If it does pass, it's, it's anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand dollars more per bus, plus it would limit some of the bus capacities based on how they do the structure of seat belts, and yes, we would need a bus, assistance on every bus, but right now, we, we budget for a bus assistance on every one of our buses now, so we have that, that part of it covered. My understanding is that the, the school transportation system is, not just ours, statewide, is really apprehensive about going forward until funding is made available from the state to do this, because it's gonna really affect middle and high schools a lot because it reduced the seating capacity when you have to put those seat belts in, which means you're gonna need more buses, you're gonna need more drivers, more bus assistance, more fuel money. So they're really waiting to see what the impact the state will do on helping fund this type of adjustment to our buses.
But you were saying eighteen years out of a bus expectancy, and I would guess that if they were to ever consider doing it with their budget and the condition that it's in right now at the state level, if they're really considering doing it, now would be the time that they would need to be funding that in order to implement it if that's the direction they want to go. I'm still not sure about whether or not they should do it, but, but if they're going to, it seems like with their current budget situation and their surplus, it would be the right time to do so.
Any questions?
I just want to make the same, similar comment that I made at the board meeting, that this is my first time coming back on the school board to go through this process with the folks on our school board, and, and I just want to, I guess, commend to you the amount of effort that they put into, not just the administrators, but administration, staff, principals, and the school board themselves. It is, they go through this budget line by line and talk of contingencies. In fact, Eddie, they've talked about, what you talked about, school buses and the impact on that, on overall bus, bus provision of that service, and they do an extremely conscientious job of, of picking this apart and trying to give the best bang for the buck in, in their budget, and I would commend them for, for having seen that again, gone through this first time in a long time to see them do it. They do an excellent job.
And Bill, I-
Thank you very much, and thank you all for your support.
I agree with everything you said. I think that there's, there's two things that I'll, I'll point out. I think they do a phenomenal job of educating, but I also think they do a phenomenal job of caring for the students, and, and it goes much beyond what they just teach in, in class each day. And so we definitely have a, a excellent board that represents the, the schools and, and beyond that, the administration, the teachers, and all the way down to the custodians. It's, it's, it's a phenomenal operation, and y'all do a fantastic job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons, the, the additional capital outlay that's requested?
Yeah, that's all part of what we're, we're pulling together. Mr. Kremel and I met this morning again on the CIP, so we're working hard to include those items in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move, thank y'all very much, and y'all are welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go. It's totally, totally up to you. And I, we'll, council members, especially Kirk, 'cause he keeps all the snacks next to him, I'm sure if y'all were to bring him up food, you probably could get moved up on the budget pretty quickly. All right, we'll move to page fifty, and that's the mayor and the council budget.
Mayor and council, your budget, you remember a few years ago, we divided up the mayor and council, city manager's office, and finance department to separate those to, to make it a little easier to follow where the expenditures are. Your budget really is fairly straightforward. You will note that your miscellaneous expense, that is the Christmas gift cards that are given to city employees at the end of the year, that is your, your largest expenditure. Did talk to finance department, it looks like we've got an error in your membership and dues. It's showing is budgeted at ninety thousand dollars. That figure's not correct. It's probably more in the sixty to sixty-five thousand dollar range. I'll work with Ms. Tucker and get that straightened out, so it looks like we've got a, a little bit of over-budget item in there, but we'll clean that up when we do our cleanup.
Mr. Lyons, for our Christmas gift, can you crunch the numbers and see what it'd be to include our part-time employees this year to get a monetary Christmas gift?
I think we looked at that a few years ago, and I think, Ms. Wright, you correct me if, if I'm wrong, but I think the year-round part-time employees are provided a portion of gift card?
I don't know completely at all. I think it's just a full-time. Who could talk about the, what we call the full-time, part-time, and at the time-
We had a difficult time getting some of the departments to define which employees work year-round as a part-time employee. It's fairly simple for a lot of departments here in City Hall because we're very stagnant, but then there's departments like Parks and Rec that that became kind of difficult. So I believe it's just full-time, but I'm not sure.
It is, it's just full-time, but my request is that we do the part-time. I would like to see all of our city employees receive a Christmas gift this year.
Okay, well, I- The challenge in that, though, be like lifeguards and stuff that are seasonal part-time employees?
Yeah, we've got seasonal, part-time employees, temporary, part-time employees, and what we call the, the year-round, part-time employees.
So Madeline, are you referring to the full-time, part-time employees that work year-round, or are you talking about truly all part-time employees?
I would like to see all our employees get a Christmas gift.
Well, some of the part-time may not even be here anymore, is part of the challenge there. Like, like you said, the lifeguards, if they just work in the summer, they-
Well, maybe not the lifeguard.
They not be here anymore.
But the others, I'd like to see us give a Christmas gift to all.
So just so we can understand and analyze it.
People and stuff like that probably wouldn't be here during the wintertime as well.
But those that are not, you know, I can understand the season of the lifeguards, but other than that, like the patrol mothers and fathers, or men and women, they haven't gotten, and I'd like to see them get Christmas gifts.
Is there a way to pull up part-time employees that, for example, may, even though they're seasonal, they work for us every year, like, you know, our, our marshals at the golf course? You know, those people that they, they stay on the payroll, but, you know, I was talking with Ashley, we were driving, she said that she worked at the concession stand at, at Sportscom, and then she went over and worked at, at McKnight, and then worked, worked at McFadden, but she did, only did that one summer. So is, is there a way to find out? We have-
Give us a chance to, to step back and, and talk to HR. We, these questions are helpful because we're trying to define what it is, and when we went through the PACE study, I know part-time is a really hard term to define because there's so many different variations of it. We want to make sure we're not leaving anybody out.
And even with reoccurring part-time, you would have to determine how many years of service would be considered reoccurring, or something like that, so?
Well, she's talking about the Christmas gift, that's not longevity. Yeah, so a Christmas gift is just a gift card, too.
I think he said, how many years, did it come up three years in a row, or when did we say that they were recurring?
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
But, but I mean, to determine whether or not they're a part-time employee that's a reoccurring, part-time employee, for example, a lifeguard that may have served one year might be different than, because they may have just worked one year and won't ever see them again, but there may be a reoccurring part-time employee who would be a lifeguard who would say, well, I've worked at Sportscom for the last seventeen years as a, a lifeguard. That might be a different situation, so.
For whatever it's worth, I think, just from the difficulty standpoint, I, I'd be on a preference of just the people who are, work all year long but are part-time. That'd be sort of what I'd be kinda-
Full-time, part-time?
Yeah, if that's what you call it, full-time, part-time, just, that'd be my preference. I mean, I think trying to figure out people who are here two months and then gone ten months and back two months, I, I mean, they, they won't even, they'll be six months away from ever being here, and we're gonna send them a gift card-
And that would be-
And we don't know if they're ever coming back.
Are you referring to people who work fifty weeks a year but only twenty hours a week?
Yeah, yeah, something like that is what I, I guess what I'm saying, so if they're here all the time- So, if they're here all the time, and are you talking about this, how much do we do on Christmas?
Fifty dollars.
Are you talking about doing the same fifty for part-times, or?
No, we just give them something. And the reason why I disagree on that, respectfully disagree, is like patrol mothers. I mean, even though they work a small amount of hours, look at what they do. We're talking about patrol mothers, for example. Those are called part-time, part-time, but look at what they do. So, I would like for us to, maybe the lifeguards that don't come back, maybe, but how hard would that be to us, for us to look at that? I would like to see.
One of the other challenges would be, if they're not still here in December when we hand these out, we would have to try to mail them gift cards. So, that's another consideration. We're happy to try to look up any way we can, but that is another consideration. If they're not employed, which a patrol mother would be employed in December, but lifeguard was just a simple thing, it came to mind, but there are other, there are other things like that where we might have referees for T-ball, or, you know, things like that.
The part-time, that are consistent part-timers, you know, for instance, patrol mothers, for example, and let's look at the lifeguards and, let's just look at the whole picture. I'd just like to see us do that. Let's look at the whole picture, if you don't mind, Mr. Lyons, and let's just.
We'll do our best.
Any other questions under mayor and council budget? Okay. We'll move to the city manager's office.
Mayor and council, the city manager's office budget is actually down a good bit this year, primarily due to some of the studies that are finishing up. The one big change in this year's budget for the manager's office is a opposed economic development director. Let me pass out a quick graphic. Try to just kinda simply give you a quick visual about what we envision that this position might do. Kind of four key areas would be part of what we're looking at. We've got plans and programs. It's the initiatives that are coming out of the Murfreesboro 2035, the Highland and Bottoms Study Areas. We wanna, we're working right now on a tax increment financing district, so the economic development director would be responsible for that, as well as any large projects that might come. We have a large project. We always wanna make sure that that goes smoothly in the coordination of the various city departments. There's a good deal of amount that, of marketing, the community. I know the chamber does a good job, but really maybe putting a spotlight on some of the initiatives that are coming out of the 2035 plan, as well as the Class A office and white-collar jobs that we're targeting. Site selection is always a task that, right now, is being handled by the manager's office. Yesterday, at three o'clock, I had a prospect in the office that I met with, and Mr. Crumley and Ms. Moody went separately out to go meet with another prospect on the Franklin Synergy Project. Developers, brokers, and site consultants contact us routinely. Mr. Hercules is a huge help in this. He very frequently can be a first point of contact, but there are a number of projects that wanna find out what are the city's available properties, what are the utilities, what is the zoning, how much land can, is needed for a particular project with the zoning requirements. And then lastly, that would be the recruitment side. We do wanna target the right kind of jobs to come to Murfreesboro, having someone solely dedicated on our team to do that. And I don't wanna underestimate the importance of meeting with our existing industry. Manager's office and the chamber are frequent visitors to our existing industries. Many new jobs come to the community, because our existing industries expand. This position could help with that. And then there's also, you know, what I would call kind of coordination with the community. We've got a great Main Street program, the downtown business community, and Small Business Administration, there's work that we think can be done by a person solely focused on this. It's been a team effort by us so far, and as the tenth fastest-growing city attracting a lot of jobs, we've obviously been successful. Planning Department picks up their fair share of load. Jim, Jennifer, myself, Mr. Tyndall, all play in that space, and I know you all are meeting with prospects as well. So, we did talk about it a little bit at the retreat. I'd certainly welcome your input and guidance on this request.
This person will just be a salaried employee, correct?
Yes, sir.
Rob, I'll be really impressed if you know the answer to this question. I think we're the tenth fastest-growing city in population growth, if you know what we are in job growth.
No, sir. Hate to disappoint you. I gotta tell the truth.
Our numbers are on the NSA, they're not specific to Murfreesboro, but the metro area has been in the top fifteen for the last five years.
I can find out, though.
And seismic activity, we're rated on the chance of an earthquake, or about what? What a plethora of information Jim has.
I'll give.
I'll have to look that one up.
I've not, you know, in the categorization of losing sleep at night and not losing sleep at night, I've not, I'm not losing sleep over whether we have or don't have this position. What are we thinking this position's gonna pay?
We've not, you've done the JAQ on it and priced it yet, 'cause we really wanted to get the temperature of city council, but I would guess it's probably in the ninety thousand dollar range, plus a budget for travel, which I did not include just yet.
I mean, I'm not opposed, but, you know, I really would rather, as we go through the budget, in a hundred and million-dollar budget, ninety thousand dollars, I don't think is, percentage-wise, but, you know, I've met, just last week, you know, met with Scott Gravy to talk about white-collar job creation, you know, in his projects, and he's, you know, working with the chamber, working individually with us as far as recruitment. And, you know, the only thing I can say is, that's a pretty close community on recruiting and with the real estate agents and the things that, you know, I'm not sure that the city is up and versed on doing a lot of that. So, I'm not sure that the duplication of that money is really gonna get us much bang for our buck. And when we're talking about, you know, if it's something helping promote heritage tourism, or if it's something on, you know, point persons on events and things that happen in the city, then, you know, I think there could be the argument for that. You know, I would much rather, in my opinion, see, when we have an economic development director, we've talked about this for four or five years, about having a one-stop-shop director, that, you know, somebody comes in, there's a point person, not just on large projects, but on smaller projects, that, you know, that person has a database, they monitor where projects are through the system, help monitor and get things going through the system. So, I guess my overall thought is, I don't, I'm not opposed to an economic development director, but I'm not sure that giving someone the title of economic development director is what I probably would be looking. 'Cause when we're talking about the 2035 area studies and TIF, we're gonna have to hire, more than likely, another person to be able to, what did they call it, a 2035 plan administrator, is what we're gonna have to.
I know the planning department has included somewhat a focus on the long-range planning, and that'll be part of their responsibilities. We've gone to a lot of time and expense to develop the comprehensive plan, and now we didn't make sure it's put into use and it's tracked, and we can report back to the council and the community how we're doing.
Yep. I'm going in circles, but I'm just not sure that.
This is one of the items.
Yeah, and I'm not dinging you on it, 'cause we did talk about this on, at the council retreat, that we had these suggestions, but that's a.
One of the things maybe we could do is look at the JAQ. You know, that might just see, I mean, as far as have a little bit more specific definition of what this position's gonna be. You know, for me, I, you know, I put five stars on my little, you know, whatever deal on having somebody like this, just because I felt like it was, you know, the chamber is dealing with the entire county, that Smyrna-Laverne, that's outside city limits, you know, so there's certainly some reason for us to have somebody who's solely focused on us, and is really maybe working on more specific direction of what the direction we wanna go, not necessarily, you know, maybe a scenario where we're looking for a specific quality of job, rather than just a quantity of jobs, you know, where that person, being an employee of the city, might be a little bit more under, you know, that, under that, you know, under that guidance, so to speak. But, you know, there's also a way that this could turn into, the title could turn into maybe something completely diff, you know, somebody doing something completely different. So, I mean, certainly, we wanna make sure that the position is something that we think is, you know, going out and achieving what it is we're trying to achieve. And certainly, I mean, I'm willing to put some resources towards trying to increase our annual incomes, you know, average annual incomes across the city, and bring better jobs, so.
If it's a white-collar job recruiter, that's completely different than someone who's just out recruiting numbers.
Yeah. Yeah. The thing, and it may just be getting a better job description and understand that the part that I'm more concerned with is, you know, that recruiting jobs in that realm is pretty closed as far as how that works, and I'm not sure that anyone that we are gonna be able to hire is gonna be able to have that, those types of contacts that are already not doing that in the private sector, that are making much more than what we're gonna be able to pay. That's, that would be my, would be my concern. And there are only things, you know, if you're looking at travel and entertaining and those things that you have to do to be able to get in that circle, you know, we're not gonna be able to allow people to go, to go do that. So, that would be my, you know, my, coming up with a game plan on how we do that.
Some of the TML meetings, they've talked about, and it's almost a lobbying position, where you go out and you court companies and corporations, and you're exactly right. I mean, that could get extremely expensive in a hurry when you start flying people in from all over the country, and just sit down at your desk and have a conversation that may or may not pan out, so. And it is one of those positions that truly, you have to have those connections, or you're not even gonna get your foot in the door to get those contacts or conversations, so.
Yeah, I mean, that was, just picking up the phone and calling XYZ company, saying, "Hey, we'd like to have you come to Murfreesboro," or sitting in their lobby, that's not gonna get us in the door. If it would, we would already have a number of companies here, so.
We'll do a little more homework on that one. We understand, I think, where you're going.
Maybe a little bit of an example of how it's worked in other communities, too. You know, I mean, this happens in a lot of other places, right? In that position.
Yeah, it's not uncommon for a city to have an economic, you know, development director. But I also wanna say, and, you know, the manager's office works hard at that, we enjoy, you know, the economic development part of the job, the chamber's been a great partner. We've clearly had some success, but, you know, I know we also have, the council has said, our office has said, we really wanna focus on those top-tier-type jobs and really go, you know, hard after those, and that was one of the motivations for me to, you know, finally push it over the edge.
Maybe a good way to do it, and if the council would be agreeable to this, is try to come up, when we talk about an economic development director, is not necessarily just focusing on new jobs. It's focusing on the existing jobs that we already have in the community, how we make the experience with the city more customer-friendly, or how we can expedite things, so that really this position wouldn't necessarily just be new businesses. It's how do we make experiences with the city even better than what they already are?
And look, when we do our existing industry visits, a lot of times, you know, the question, we finish up by saying, "Is there anything you need from the city?" Nope, but it is about relationship building. And there's been more than a couple times where we were good at that day, and then another day, something happened, and we weren't good. And they picked up the phone, and they didn't have to say, "Hey, I'm the plant manager, can I speak to the city manager?" It was no, "Hey, Rob, it's Phil, I need your help." We'd established the relationship, and we fixed it like that. A lot of those visits are about establishing those relationships, so that when something does go kaboom, or there's a problem, or they wanna expand, then we already know each other, and they know the planning director, and they know everybody else, and we're able to go in and fix things more quickly than having to say, "Nice to meet you, what can I do to help you?"
But so much of this communication goes on behind the scenes anyways, because as soon as a company says, "I'm going somewhere," there's five other cities that step forward and say, "Well, why don't you consider coming to our city, too?" And so, it does become quite competitive in nature, once you get to the point that the word's out that somebody's thinking about moving, so.
And Mr. Wade got a firsthand seat last week when we went to ICSC of how many people and how much activity is out there. It's impressive, there's, things move fast, and there's a lot of people out there competing.
So, Rob, is this gonna be a national search for this person?
Absolutely, if we did.
I think that's a must. You gotta have the right person. You just can't pick anybody out the street.
All right, I'll get some more information, too, on this.
Before the conversation goes off into something else, let me just kinda put a little two cents worth in, in the conversation. Economic development might not necessarily, kinda like what the mayor was saying, define exactly what my direction would be. You know, when you think of hiring somebody, you kinda look at what is not being done and what needs to be addressed by that new employee. And maybe we need to think a little bit about what is, where's the gap in what we're offering? And my concern that we don't forget is, some of the conversation that we had was about how do we coordinate and leverage some of the tourism effort in our community? So, I don't know exactly how you're gonna define this person, but I think it could be, under this umbrella, somehow defining how we coordinate and really, I guess, coordinate what is being done in our events and our venues in our community from a tourism standpoint. And that is something that could be done without, you know, 'cause there's a gap there right now. I think most people that have been a part of the discussion that we've been having about heritage tourism is, there's a gap there right now, and I'd like to see the city look at how we can address this, and it might be under this umbrella of this position somehow. And that's not just recruiting new jobs, that's leveraging more dollars to come to our community that are good dollars, like we all know, tourism dollars are good dollars to be leveraging, and I'd like to see us spend a little more, be a little bit more intentional about doing that.
And I know Kurt mentioned a national search, but I mean, when you look at the success that we're seeing in Williamson County right now, and their ability to bring in white-collar jobs and corporate headquarters, you know, we may just need to talk to somebody over there and say, "Hey, guys," you know, they may not wanna give away the secret, because, I mean, that may be handing off the eggs from the golden goose, but the, but there is a, there is a method that they're using that is working, and whatever it is that we're doing does not seem to be working very well at bringing in those corporate headquarter-type situations, or those white-collar jobs that we would really like to see coming into the community, whether it be from engineering, or accounting, or, you know, certainly from the technology world of what's going on, the Silicon Valley-type stuff. I mean, I think there's opportunities there that Murfreesboro would be extremely attractive to, because of our educational resources with MTSU being here. And I think there's opportunities that are there, that somehow we're just not making that connection and getting that click that seems to be able to bring them into Rutherford County and Murfreesboro.
Okay, any questions? Thank you for responding, Mr. Lyons, to what we had requested at the council retreat. All right, we'll move to Evergreen Cemetery. It's the supplemental binder, it's the green tab. Any questions?
It's behind the blue tab.
I'm sorry.
In front of the green tab.
When I said the green tab, I meant the evergreen tab. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. So, it's the Evergreen blue tab.
Who would put a blue tab on the Evergreen?
I know.
Section.
Ms. Lines, the discussions we've had on, with Evergreen on their construction, if we made any more progress on that?
We haven't. That would really be a CIP issue with a, a new building and maintenance facility for, for Evergreen. They did approach the mayor and I about a need and, you know, that would be a CIP type item.
We may need to all of the council members go take a look at what is existing that's out there and, and as we, before we look at the CIP plan, I, I think their maintenance shed was built in nineteen, early something in the nineteen hundreds.
It's pretty well broken in, Mayor.
Yeah. All right, any questions? All right, we'll move the Finance and Tax Department.
You're not going to put me at the end?
What's that?
I said you're not going to put me at the end.
If you call me, if you call me mayor brag, I would have.
I apologize for the cough, I haven't coughed since lunch, hardly at all, and I'm walking here and I can't stop. A couple of things I'd like to highlight in our department for the 2017 accomplishments is that we did implement an online payment system for property taxes this past year. It proved to be pretty popular and, um, we're real proud of that. It's worked out really well with our staff as well. Uh, also want to point out that Erin Tucker, our Assistant Finance Director, is, uh, still very involved with Munis and adding in more modules and working with the departments such as the judicial module. And, uh, we're working on fixed assets now. And, uh, she needs a big pat on the back. She has been, just worked really hard with this as well as picking up some slack as we lost Anna Stovall this year, so Erin had to dive back into the budget. And, um, I just want to pat her on the back, she's done a great job with all of that. For 2018 goals, we're looking at some more property tax payment strategies. We're thinking about barcoding our bills as well as maybe a lockbox for future use. And, uh, we work with the city manager's office in preparing information for 2017 debt issuance, once the capital improvement plan is finished. And, um, Erin is also looking towards doing some train the trainer approach to get some, uh, skilled Munis users within the various departments, so that they, as they develop a comfort level, are able to help others within their department. Our budget itself is pretty flat. Uh, we've added about forty thousand to the audit line, because we're wanting to do another hotel motel occupancy, occupancy tax audit. In 2013, we tried to get the county to go in with us on that, so we could share the cost. They weren't interested and we're hoping we can do that this year. Um, we did collect approximately a hundred and nine thousand dollars in, uh, taxes that had not been paid or penalty and interest for payments that were late as a result of that. And we just think it's fiscally prudent to make sure everybody knows that we're keeping an eye on that and we hope the county participates with us this year. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
I might add to Melissa's presentation, I think we're on about the third version of a, a financial dashboard, uh, which will allow us to graphically and, and do a better job, uh, reporting the city's financial position throughout the year. Um, IT has been fantastic about pulling the data from our Munis system, uh, so that we can send you a, a very graphically easy to read, um, financial report called a dashboard. So, that's coming sooner rather than later. I think we're, we're in the polishing stages.
That's our hope.
Ms. Wright, is, on the online payment system, is, is there a credit card fee or a transaction fee? And if so, do we eat that or how does that work?
There is one and the customer pays it. So, those who are lower income are not financing that, correct?
So, so, so if a person were to try and benefit from it by running up their transactions on, for air mileage or whatever, they wouldn't be able to do so because?
Well, they can, they just pay the fee. And we've had many say that's fine with them, they didn't care. It was, it's not big enough to matter.
Okay.
Um, but they can also pay it by an e-check, which is a dollar fifty flat fee, if, if it's just a matter of, I can't get up there or I can't get it in the mail. But we do have a lot of credit card payments that are large in amount and they want the miles or the points and they don't, they don't mind. But we, we do not eat the fee on those, because that is something by law they're supposed to pay. And it's not, not like we're going to sell more in quantity to make that up like somebody, say, the golf course or something like that.
Right, okay. So, so it's a, it's a break even, they're just forwarding the fee money to us and there's no plus or loss?
Actually, the, the fee goes directly to the credit card processor, we never even see it.
Okay.
Under capital expenditures, do we have something, it's not on there, but do we have something in place, um, for?
Building security?
Yes.
I could read your mind.
Yeah, I was trying to think of how you say that.
We already have that in, uh, in existing CIP. Uh, the team's been meeting on that, um, so, yes, that is.
Do we have a timeline that's going to be done?
We have designed a security system that, that is carried from our head right now to San Antonio. The, the Department of Fire, Department of Security, when they're building right now. Um, this building, I don't think we're thirty to sixty minutes away from getting processed.
Okay, I don't want to talk about that publicly.
There you go.
But.
I think it's high priority.
Yes. All right. Any questions for the Finance and Tax Department?
Great job, thank you. We have a good staff.
Purchasing Department, page sixty-four. Paul, and I believe this is your first, first budget, isn't it?
Yes, sir. That's not my first budget, my first Murfreesboro.
Right, we should have put you at the end of the budget then.
I was trying to count this afternoon, this is thirty-four, thirty-five, I can't really remember. It is unique, because I proposed a budget that's down. I don't think I've ever done that before in thirty-four, thirty-five years. We've scrubbed our budget pretty good. My predecessor had a lot of things in there that we choose, I guess, not to participate in. So, we've managed to have a twelve percent increase by taking money out of travel, memberships, those kinds of things. We do have some money in there for a couple, and, and a couple of initiatives next year. Uh, one is around twenty thousand dollars to support a small business enterprise program. We, um, our competition is lackluster at best, I guess, if I was going to use, try to use a nice term. And we have come to a conclusion in meeting with some folks that have been in the business longer than myself, and also talking to vendors, that we need to court the small businesses a little more. We have a lot of work for small businesses and we have a lot of contracts that get in very little competition for small businesses. So, those two things together serve as a motivation for us to consider going into that business by developing a program in the next fiscal year. And I think, in the long run, it'll save the city enough money that it'll kind of pay for these startup costs. Because we just are not getting the kind of competition we should have for the size organization that, that we are. So, as I said, we've included about twenty thousand dollars in this budget, uh, proposed budget to support that program. The other initiative is, we've been asked by the manager's office to create what they choose to call Contract Central. We are going to establish a system that the purchasing department will be the proponent agency for, that every contract in the city will be electronically filed in that system. If it's an actual purchase, all the supporting documents will go in that file. One of our growing pains is that, since it was distributed to all the departments, as some of our longtime employees leave and we lose that knowledge, we can't find contracts. We can't find, the one this week is dry cleaning for the police and fire department, okay? We have scrubbed and scrambled and talked to, I don't know how many people. We're almost there, we almost have all the pages pulled together. But if we create this electronic repository, purchasing as well as every other department in the city with a push of a few buttons, maybe the typing of a search phrase, we'll be able to pull all those documents up on their computer. So, and that is, uh, we, we've bought a scanner as a start on that for our office, and that's coming out of this year's budget, so I think we're ready to go on that. That's more a time user. That's really all I have, Mayor. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
We're really excited about the small business program. We're, you know, we know there's a number of small businesses in the community that are looking for work, that have skills and, and talent, uh, that can benefit the city. Um, and we're bidding out some small projects and not getting much, um, response from the, from the local business community. So, this is going to involve training, helping them understand how to do business with the city, how to look for work with the city, um, and get them more actively involved. It'll be good for them, it'll be good for us, and we'll be able to keep some, some work here local.
Is that hospital and health insurance and dental insurance, is that line correct? Doesn't appear to.
We've got two full-time employees in purchasing, so it would depend on whether they had family and medical coverage compared to what was happening in the past.
In the past.
But we'll double check it.
We're both on single.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the Building and Coes Department, page one twenty-two. Ms. Holtz.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Uh, to give you a few highlights of what the Building and Coes Department's been up to the last year, uh, we've issued a little over ten thousand five hundred permits, uh, that would be building mechanical plumbing permits. Uh, we began issuing food truck permits, which were up to twenty-one of those permits so far. Uh, those permits included twenty-two hundred dwelling units, that is, single-family dwelling apartments, townhomes. Issued three hundred and twenty-five commercial building permits and, uh, started about thirteen hundred property maintenance cases for weeds and grass, open storage. In addition to that, about three hundred substandard cases, which are structures that were substandard. Uh, in the revenue end of our budget, uh, we're projecting to bring in, and we're right on track, about three point six million in permit fees this fiscal year. I'm projecting to bring in about the same amount for the next fiscal year, so there's no real significant increase, uh, in our revenues. Uh, on the expenditure side, everything is pretty much staying flat. Uh, one item I'd like to bring out to your attention, under contractual services, we put thirty-five thousand dollars in there for hiring a sign consultant. Uh, you may be aware, our staff has been trying to revise the signed ordinance for about four years. We've got about sixty percent of the ordinance completed, uh, and it's just a time-consuming process. I'm thinking hiring a consultant and someone with experience in writing an ordinance, someone who's familiar with the new technologies, uh, can come in and assist us in re-updating our ordinance. Uh, this would definitely be a, a process where the public stakeholders are all included in the process. Um, we've, uh, talked to one sign consulting firm who gave us a ballpark number of twenty-five thousand. I included thirty-five thousand just to cover any unforeseen conditions, asked them to include in his pricing, public meetings, uh, meetings with the council and the planning commission. So, we think with, uh, my, my vision of a sign ordinance would be an ordinance that includes options for the business owners, instead of just saying you can have one sign this size, maybe you can have a couple of different sign, signs that are of equal size. Uh, and there's new technology out there that we should probably consider putting in our ordinance, so. Uh, that's our budget. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Yeah, I want to kind of highlight also, you know, Mr. Holtz's request for, uh, having a comprehensive look at our sign ordinance. Uh, each of you have been around, uh, a while and dealing with, signs can be very emotional. We need a sign ordinance that is going to be fair, that's going to be good for the business community, that's going to look attractive. Uh, but these things sometimes can come with some emotion and we want it to be easy for sign companies and businesses to understand what they can have and, uh, ensure that it looks good in the community. Um, and so, we've tried and been very successful at, you know, amending the sign code so far, but it takes a tremendous amount of time. Uh, when we go for revisions, the council chambers are usually packed. Uh, but we do want to, uh, recommend engaging the users of the sign ordinance, the community, to really step back and make sure that we've got a modern, progressive, uh, sign ordinance. Uh, this one will not be easy. Uh, I would, would submit to you, but.
Just do that.
We're, uh, but we also know, you know, sitting still is, is, can be a challenge as well. So, uh, this is another one of those items that we want to get your, uh, reaction and temperature on.
You talking about permanent versus, we just did temporary, right?
Yes, sir.
So, now we're talking about permanent?
It's a good time.
I had, I talked to Mr. Lines about, I'm not sure whether this would be out of the Building and Coes Department, but something really would like to see researched, um, that, you know, it seems like we always have something under construction in the city and we rely on either an architect or a contractor to do the majority of our owner's representation. But I think it would be prudent to research moving forward, knowing we've got five fire stations that we talked about that we're going to have to build over the next five years. We've got West Park that's going to have to be built. We've got lots of things that if we had a, I don't know what the, the term would be, but a construction manager, that, you know, we had someone that was capable, that is looking at things that our staff, they're not trained to, to look at. And, uh, I know we've got many capable inspectors who do that on a daily basis, but not just looking at, you know, Coes issues. For example, when this building was built, I know Ron was looking at some of those, but, you know, I can go through the building and say, okay, there's something that needs to be fixed, there's something that needs to be fixed. But if we've got an owner's rep that is someone that's trained to do that, that may be where we're talking about construction manager at risk, we're talking about low bid, when we have those, we've got someone who, who can do that.
I, I think the mayor's suggestion's an excellent one. There is plenty of construction projects coming forward. We do have city staff that help out, you know, our engineer, uh, engineering staff does that, um, the, but they've also got many other duties. So, we end up having somebody like Sam Hoddleston, who's very talented and pulled in a lot of directions, and Sam's got to pull off what he's doing, maybe reviewing plans for a project that a developer's brought forward and run out in the field and double check to see what's, uh, what's going on and protecting the city's interest. I think what would be important with a position like this is that their sole focus is representing the city on these, you know, construction projects, working with the superintendent, working with the architect or designer, to make sure that the quality of work is what it's supposed to be, that they can speak the language of a contractor. Um, there can be, there's plenty of work coming, uh, down the road for us, as the city constructs facilities, uh, buildings and, and projects, uh, to keep somebody, keep somebody busy. Alternatively, and we've talked about it, Mr. Tindell and I have talked about it, we've even gotten close to bidding something out. You can send this out to the private sector and hire an owner's rep, even though you've hired a contractor and you've hired an architect to, to fill this role. Uh, but, but this is something I think we, we might want to think about.
I think a lot of different city departments get involved in what, what you're looking for.
But it's always in addition, it's one of those other duties as a sign.
You get called out to look at stuff, not necessarily from a Coe perspective, but as an owner's representative. Uh, so, it's, it's probably something that's needed.
And, not to continue saying we need to add more people to this department, but I think that we need to seriously look at having a person who goes out and looks for Coe violations in neighborhoods, because when, you know, it's kind of the bad neighbor who calls on their neighbor and says, my neighbor needs to mow their grass, because personally, I think you ought to go over there and mow the grass for them if, if they need help. But, but, but they may not want you to. But, but, but rather than having a neighbor complain and say, hey, you know, so-and-so over here's not mowing the grass, and then the question in the neighborhood is always, well, who's reporting everybody? well, who's reporting everybody? Would, would we better, be better off to have someone who goes around and looks for trashy conditions where there's just enormous amounts of trash building up around the house or, or the grass needs mowing, or a large parcel of property where the grass has been three foot high for a year and a half? I mean, is it, is it, I mean, when we talk about the city and the city being attractive without having a few little rat thinks that are out there, you know, tattle-telling on everybody, would we be better off to have a employee in this department that actually rode the streets of Murphysboro and looked for violations and said, you know, here's your citation, nobody reported you, I'm just saying you're in violation, and would we be better off to do that?
Well, we, we do that already now. We, we, a lot of, what do we go off, our complaints, um, but when they're out investigating a complaint, we've been trained to look at, at neighbors' houses to make sure we're not giving the appearance of picking on this one person.
Do you have time, I mean, do your, do your folks have time to be proactive with that?
We have two full-time property maintenance inspectors. Now, they also work some with window signs and stuff like that, but, but I'd say seventy-five percent of their time is, is just doing property maintenance. They have the town divided in half. Uh, it's a big city and, and they're, as I said before, we had like thirteen hundred cases we started. Uh, now, when I say cases, that means we actually send them a letter. Our, our process is when we see a violation, we typically leave a door docket or talk to the homeowner, if they're home, and tell them, you've got tall grass, you've got open storage issues, clean it up, please. We'll go back in a week, if it's still in violation, we actually send them a letter. So we did that about thirteen hundred times this fiscal year so far.
Out, out of those, I mean, out of those, how many were based on complaints and how many of them were based on, hey, we just saw it and we initiated it?
I don't, I don't know that we track it that way, to be honest with you. I, I, I'm just guessing, I'm, I'm guessing twenty-five percent is what we pick up on our own.
Twenty-five percent?
I'm just guessing.
The problem I've got, Robert, is I can ride down here to Loki and point at slum lords, basically, that are running apartment complexes and stuff on, out of houses that just look horrible. I can go over to Rutherford Boulevard, I rode by a house today and I looked at it and I thought, that's not yard art, that's trash in their yard. I, I mean, it, it, it's, it's just too easy to ride around this town and see what, and I'm not a trained codes violation, so they may not be in violation, but, but to me, I think I can identify when tra, when trash is trashy and when grass is more than a foot high, and I just think we've got way too many places in town that if you don't have the manpower to do it, let's, let's add manpower to, to get it done, because it, I, I'm not saying it's your fault at all.
I understand, I understand that.
It, uh, I'm just saying that we've got way too many trashy places in Murphysboro that need to be cleaned up.
We, we can definitely put a, a, a little more effort in, into it, see if we can't pick up more. But, but I agree with you, and I get out and I ride around and I can see there are violations out there. Now, you'd be surprised how many times we get complaints and we look into it, and we've already started a case. A lot of complaints, I think, are sent to Rob, he forwards them to me, occasionally our response is, we've already got a case.
Yeah.
It takes time sometimes to get some people willing to clean up their property.
Yeah, make sure you understand, we're, we're talking about more manpower.
Well.
To help you, to help you, okay? Keep, keep that in mind as far as it relates, relates to, because, I mean, I, I kind of am with, with Eddie.
If you need it, now's the time to ask, is what we're saying.
We can probably, we just put them in there and we can use them. As you said, you see plenty of violations, they're out there, I mean.
I got a phone call today. I mean, you know, saying that exact phone call, it's, it's unbelievable, grown up, obviously hadn't been mowed all year long, I mean, it's, you know, that kind of thing, and I, you know, um.
Eddie, will you mow your yard?
Come on, Eddie.
I'll mow your yard if you, if you want me to. I enjoy mowing grass.
Can you continue that process? I know you said the, uh, you leave something on the door and then they get a letter. Can you continue that process after they get that letter, what happens?
The, the letter gives them twenty days to clean up or, or resolve the violation. At the end, at the end of twenty days, we can cite them to city court. Uh, our normal process is to try to talk to them again and say, we've been, you know, approved to cite you to court, but I'll give you another week or two to get it cleaned up. Um, if they don't, again, we'll cite them to court. The judge tip, typically gives them thirty more days once they finally get into court to clean it up, but, you know, he's, his hands are tied to a maximum of fifty dollar a day fine. We, we clean, we had, uh, there's a street called Douglas Street that was cleaned up this past year, and we've been dealing with this homeowner for about ten years. He had fifty thousand dollars in fines by the time he finally got the property cleaned up and sold. So some people allow their fines to get really high, but, but our hands are somewhat tied.
So what do we do? Sounds like we don't have a good success ratio, so what do we actually do when, you know, fifty thousand dollars, what's the likelihood you're going to get that? I mean.
Well, we collected that money. There's a lien on the property when it was sold.
So what percentage, you say, is a, is a successful percentage once we cite them that they pay?
Ninety-five percent of the people, uh, property, maybe even higher percentage of that, we'll get them cleaned up sometime before the judge starts fines, about that.
And do you see any repeat trashers?
Occasionally, yes.
And so do we have a different process for those?
The, the ordinance doesn't really allow us to, you know, if someone's a repeat offender, to take any additional action against them. We just have to start it as a new case each time.
I'd like to go back to what the Mayor talked about. Can we just try to get something in place with more collaboration with, uh, building codes, engineering, planning? When we, when somebody brings a project to the city, it's its. We can say it don't, but it does, and it takes forever, and we lose track of how we're doing business. People are bringing us money and wanting to develop in our city. We've got to improve the process. We need to, um, get something, um, worked out where we can have a better process, we can call one department and we know where something is, or we don't have to call six and seven departments to figure out what's going on with the process.
I mean, is this something we'd let slip? Because, I mean, Shannon Logan used to be a service excellence facilitator. I mean, that was her job, basically, it seemed to me like, of making sure that when a person came, that the process rolled. I'm, I'm not sure we have that person anymore. I mean, is that?
Yeah, I think there's, there's really maybe two things, uh, going on. One, you know, the service excellence was really that customer service training, and we've still got, um, an employee that does that in the police department. Uh, we've sent employees when there's been some hotspots to go, uh, get trained on it. It's probably something we need to, to get back and focus some more time and attention on. Part of what I hear Mr. Wade saying, though, is really the, the process to be efficient when a developer brings a set of plans in till the time they get out the door and get their, actually get their final C of O. Um, that process right now is, uh, can be convoluted, but we're doing it in a manual way. And if you remember when we, I think, talked at the beginning of our budget presentation this year, um, we're planning to tackle a major software upgrade of that development review process. Um, now, here's the challenge for us right now, we can't wait till that's implemented to, to make some changes. Um, right now, the, the workload is, is enormous upstairs, and we're doing it in a manual process. You know, Ten Fastest Growing City, there's a lot of sets of plans, but in some cases, it's self-inflicted. Maybe we're not returning calls, we're not doing a good job communicating with the engineer and developer, when those get brought to our attention, we have a conversation with, with staff. Um, long-term, though, I think the real answer is we, we've got to automate this. Um, and that automated process has, you know, as you've heard me say before, has got some bells on it. If comments aren't back in three days or whatever time period we set, it dings a bell to that employee, and five days to their supervisor, and six days to the city manager, so that we can catch where there are some snags and holdups. You know, sometimes projects get held up because the design team hasn't been thorough. Um, it's taking staff a long time to review it, so there's a lot of different reasons for it. Um, there's never an excuse for not returning phone calls, there's never an excuse for being rude. Uh, we will address those when, when they get brought to our attention, we have, you know, a, a number of times. Um, that's not acceptable, but we do have to get better. All things being said, the team upstairs, you know, in this building is working a ton of hours trying to get stuff out the door. Um, the, I saw the planning commission minutes for, um, the May third meeting, it was forty-eight pages. That's just the minutes. That's the kind of workload Kurt and, uh, Eddie are smiling over there, they were there.
Yeah, we.
So I do appreciate the feedback. Um, it, it is a good reminder, we'll, we can huddle up with our team, we've done that, uh, before. Um, we've got to get better in the short term, we've got to, you know, come up with a permanent solution, and most of all, we've got to be good to the people who come spend money in our city to build something.
Yeah.
Robert, don't take any of my comments the wrong way, you do a phenomenal job, and every time I've called you, you've responded immediately. So, so, I mean, but, but if, but if you need more help, let's, now's the time to talk about it.
We can, we can put them in there if, if, uh, the money in the budget, and see if there's some improvements we can make without, putting that, filling that position. If we can't, we can always bring them in.
I, I want to make just a, a couple of comments. I, I don't, I don't, we'll say from a building and code standpoint, you know, and Robert, I'm up there with my other hat on quite a bit. You have a phenomenal department. Um, I mean, you know, the amount of plans that are coming in, does it take a little longer sometime to review everything to be thorough? That's not necessarily Building and Co's Department's issue, because you're waiting maybe on comments for five or six other departments. But the ladies that are working up front, issuing permits, uh, the entire inspector group, they're all phenomenal. I don't, I get very rare comments from, or negative comments on Building and Codes. The department that I think Kurt refers to, that we all continually get, I won't say continually, the, I think, in planning, the thing that we would want to, to look at is the amount, and it, it really is not their fault, it's just the amount of detail that goes in, is the amount of time that it takes on reviewing engineering plans. So that, that, and I don't think that's necessarily their fault, I think it's just the, the, the gravity of making sure that you don't want to miss a sewer issue or a, a street issue, so, because, you know, once those plans are reviewed, we're going to live with those for, forever.
And, and so when we talk about sometimes the, the too-long period of time it takes to review, so a set of plans comes in and staff goes through them and we send three pages worth of comments and it goes back to the, the design engineer, they make the changes and they resubmit the plans. We really have to go back to square one and count the parking spaces, check the open space area, check the setbacks, we've got to do all that over again. Here's what the software does, the software takes version one and version two, and it'll draw a bubble around what's different. Then you can just look at what's different and move on because the rest of it stayed the same, but right now, we don't know that. So we, it's like starting all over again. And sometimes you change something over here, it causes a new problem, and then that's another staff comment, and so we have this cycle, um, that is time-consuming for the design engineer, it delays the developer, and it's, it's hard on our team. Um, so that's where we've got to get more efficient, because the volume of plans that are coming in, that team's working hard, and I know you guys know that. Um, but right now, that manual process is, 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 can be a challenge.
Do we have, and this is not y'all's fault, and, and I'm the guy who just said, hey, let's not change, you know, we've had enough change over the last two or three years, but we've talked about this for quite some time, do we have a, a timeline that we're going to try to get something implemented, or?
So, yeah, city court, we, in the, uh, IT master plan, um, that was approved by the, the council, um, phase one was our financial, our human resource, and our city court. City court just went live.
In April.
In April. Now that that's done, we've already, you know, started meeting with Mr. Lilly to get the team together to scope out what we need to do on the, the development, uh, software. So that is the very next priority for us on the IT side.
This is the only thing I would say, and just to relate to staff. Obviously, I'm in the construction industry, but I don't think that there is a industry that employs as many people countywide as the construction industry.
Right, you're right.
If you take, you know, the subcontractors, the families of the subcontractors, so the one thing that I would just want to impress on all of our staff members, you know, when you're talking about plumbers or trim carpenters or ditch diggers or excavators, for every day that we hold someone up, we're not only holding a project up, but we're holding someone's livelihood up. So, you know, that, and I'm preaching to the choir with, with Robert, but th, those are the things, when we talk about automating programs, you know, this is a, it's a, it's a big circle, so the quicker that we can get something moving along, the, the better.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Uh, Mr. Smith, I agree totally with what your comments are. I, I see the violations out there, so nothing was definitely taken in the wrong way, and to the Mayor, I've learned in the last two years, we do have a first-class staff. Uh, it's something you don't appreciate until you're in my position, to see how much they do, how much they put up with, and how well they, they handle situations, and it impresses me every day, each and every one of them is dear to my heart.
Absolutely. Who got?
I appreciate your feedback.
When Ms. Lilly retired, who got her chair?
That technically would be Katie.
Okay.
Yeah. We did change the job script, job around a little bit, but basically.
When, when, when Ms. Lilly retired, she had this really killer chair that everyone in the department wanted, her, her office chair, and so I was just wondering who actually got her office chair when she retired.
It was actually, it was actually labeled as an eight-hour chair, so, uh, they rate chairs by the number of hours you sit in them.
Nice.
Katie's still sitting in it.
Tell Katie that I asked that question.
I will.
All right.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we have Urban, Urban Environmental Department, and then we'll move into the Civic Plaza at the same time. Ms. Holloway.
Oh, good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Um, I'll start off with our fiscal year 2017 accomplishments, and I'm very proud to tell you that we did accomplish all those and exceeded many of those accomplishments. And talking about, I'll talk a little bit about our, uh, 2018 departmental goals, if I may. Um, first off, we, I know this seems like a, a never-ending project, sort of, uh, in the downtown revitalization, but in fact, it, it, it's so, it's not static, there's always something happening, we're always trying to replace trees, they're dying out or we're having storms or something, so, um, we continually try to keep that area as good-looking as we possibly can. So, right now, we're looking at replacing three trees on that particular project, um, if we don't have any more additional storms, that is. Um, the next thing that we're looking at is, uh, for the next year, is completing the landscape installation for the Lidle Street, um, roundabout, and I do want to ask and talk a little bit about this. We're ready to really go on this and finish it up, but there's been some conversations that I've had with Mr. Lyons and others in the administration department about, um, the artwork there, and I think that that's a, a real appropriate place for it, it's been mentioned. Um, and so maybe there needs to be some more conversation about that. If nothing else, maybe getting in there and pouring a, a slab or a base for it before we put the final touches on it, so that we don't have to move or replace plant materials. Um, so that may be something that, um, we, we all need to talk about at some point pretty soon, so that we can finish up that project. We just don't want to get in there and get everything planted and then have to come back and redo it again. So, um, that's really all that we're kind of waiting on, so, um, I don't know if we have, if that could be done with the ARC committee, or, or who, who would take that torch and go with it, so, um, we can talk about that more later. Um, we continue to do the, um, we, we work with cable a lot, we have a very good, um, communications and cable department guarding in the city, um, constantly, you know, trying to keep up with that, we're, we're getting, um, we take requests from the public about what they'd like to see, so, um, that's been a very, very popular, uh, program for us, and I'll ask Mr. Adams, one of those that you did with Oakland County, you used to bet.
It's fifteen hundred.
So, yeah, it's a very popular program, and we continue to educate the public in all aspects of the horticultural side of things. Um, last year, we were looking at a monitoring and an education program on the Emerald Ash Bore. Um, it has moved into our area, we're seeing a, uh, we're starting to take down a lot of ash trees, so what we're starting to do is the actual, um, you know, treatment program for it, um, and in some cases, we'll just take, um, the tree down. It's an expensive program, um, so we're keeping our eye out for that. It's, uh, unfortunately, um, it has, like I said, moved into this area, and you have to spray for it, and we don't want to lose a lot of our ash trees, but we're seeing a lot of those standing dead, so we're, we're moving on that pretty quickly. Um, the Oakland's Tree Maintenance and, and Replacement Program. The Oakland's Tree Maintenance and Replacement Program is on an as-needed basis. Those trees are continuing to die now, even though that we, we've tried a lot of different things for them. So we're just monitoring those as well. They were planted very close together many, many years ago. So they have some disease problems and we've tried to treat for that. And, and we've been semi-successful on some and not on others. So that's those trees that line the entrance there. We hate to lose them, but we're, we're in a replacement program now with that. I did lay out in front at your desk, it looks like this, Mr. Lance, I think this is kind of one of your projects. We're starting on, beginning on our phase one of the Rutherford Boulevard median tree replacement program. And if you want to take a look at that, these are our three phases that we've come up with to plant trees into the median there. Phase one is approximately 28 trees from Ransom Drive to Lismore Drive. Phase two is approximately 20 trees from Lismore to Haven Drive. And phase three would be from Haven to East Main Street. And again, we're looking at putting two and a half inch caliper trees in those medians. And it's been a request and it's something that we've wanted to do also. We do have to split it up in phases because of the maintenance issues. We just don't have the manpower to, you know, and we've had some pretty brutal summers. So watering is going to be an issue for those areas that don't have irrigation in them. And we're ready to go. We'd like to finish up the landscaping for the Bloomfield Links parking lot. We're just waiting on that construction project to finish. That's kind of an in-house design install there. So we're just waiting for that to finish up so that we can get in there. So those are our, kind of our goals for the, for this year and next, for the remaining of the, this year and next. Moving on to the budget, I have to have a big budget here because I can't see with or without my glasses. So a couple, one thing that I would like to mention, I think that last week you were made aware that we lost our tree climber. And that was a real blow to us. Unfortunately, they had a family medical emergency and they needed to leave. They were not eligible for FMLA. You have to be here at least 12 months, complete a year before you are. And so there was no other way for them to stay with us. There is, if you look over there, there is a decrease in that salary. Now, speaking with the finance department today, I think that probably, we had to offer that position at the highest rate to get them in here. And this is sort of looking at the low rate, but so that we don't have to have a budget amendment. It is going to probably take going up to the higher rate to get one again. And I had a great conversation with HR today. I've talked to Jane Corbin. And they are in conversations with an online recruiting firm and they would like to try to prioritize this. You paid that recruiting firm and they helped you recruit for this position. And you've probably heard of Indeed. It's like the number one, I guess, website for looking for a job. And so she was really, really enthusiastic about it, trying to kind of, like I said, get the best bang for our buck. Go in there and, and pay them. I didn't really talk to her about the monetary part about it. But they focus on your job. They keep it up on their webpage front and center. And he was very aware of what it would take to get this position filled. So she's really recommending that that's the direction that we go for that, to try to get that position filled as quickly as we can. Other than that, we're just kind of static in, in that budget. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions? Okay. We'll move to civic plaza.
Not much difference there. So, any questions?
That sounds like Ken Honeycutt, for those of y'all who remember.
Sweet. Well, we are on a negative on that one.
Ken Honeycutt.
On our civic plaza, on our urban environmental budget. And Melissa can probably explain this better than I can. I guess this is the first year we've had to report the tree bank, the estimate, put it in.
Well, we've been doing it in the audit report and not been putting it in the budget.
Right.
And now with Munis, in order to get purchase orders, they need to have the tree bank expenditures budgeted. So that's in that horticultural line. They've been spending tree bank money to do it, but that's in our fund balance as restricted funds. So we just need to get the other side budgeted so that they can actually get a purchase order when they want to buy a tree.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Holloway.
Ms. Holloway, thanks a lot for being responsive and y'all coming up with a good, responsible plan to do that. I appreciate it. On, on Rutherford Boulevard. Thank you.
You're so welcome.
All right. Thank you. Kane, thank you. All right. We'll move to other governmental, other general governmental, page 228.
I want to lead you through the next four items on here. The other government, other general government is our catch-all budget for items that are significant, but don't really have a home in a department. Just quickly running through the significant items and the changes in this code for this year. We've moved the retirees who are running out their time out of the various departments that they worked their careers in and into this account. One particular department had a, a strong amount of retirees this year that would have skewed the appearance of their expenses greatly. Pulling all of those retirees out of the department budgets and placing them here seemed to make great sense. The premiums for retirees' health insurance are also included in this account. Next year is reappraisal of property in Rutherford County. We have included a half a million dollars of additional money in this budget for our share, our anticipated share of the reappraisal costs. That is likely to be a two-year item. We'll probably have some additional amount in the following year that's a catch-up. Probably not nearly this great an expense, but more than likely there'll be some appraisal costs up here in the next budget. All the insurance premiums have been moved out of the departments and into this code. So you can, we still can track all the claims individually by department. We can still look back at how departments have performed. But just really for convenience, Craig's money he's extracting from the general fund is located here. The mixed drink tax transfer, 50% of the mixed drink tax in Tennessee goes to education. So we put that portion in this account that's then distributed to both the city and the county schools. Our allowance for property tax that can't be collected or refunds that come in during the course of the year that need to be paid are also included in this account. And last, but certainly not least, the unforeseen. We have a half a million dollars budgeted for the unanticipated, the unexpected, the things that we know will sometimes occur during the course of the 12-month budget, but we don't have any way of predicting at this point. Be glad to try to answer any questions. Ready to move forward? Flip you to page 238. This is our debt service account. Just some key numbers from this account for putting into your memories. At the very bottom in that left-hand column on page 238 is the total debt. It showed the general fund, long-term debt of the city, June 30, 2016, just under $234 million. There's a wonderful detailed accounting that Melissa and her team put together of each and every bond issue that makes up that $234 million that you can reference in the preceding pages to this. The proposed general fund increase, all funds pay their portion of the debt service into this account. And then 100% of the interest and principal on the city's debt is paid from this account. So if you look, you'll see more than just the general fund making contributions on page 240 at the very top into this account. The general fund's contribution is projected to increase $1.7 million. That is our anticipated cost during this 12 months for the 2017 bond issue. We met back in December to kind of go over capital planning with the, the council. And at that point in time, we showed you the, the ratios that constrain how the city has currently decided to borrow its funds. Since that point in time, we've had both new numbers from the property assessor and new estimates on population that have changed those numbers to some degree. For the current year to, if you wanted to cap out and maximize all those ratios, the city could effectively borrow about $70 million. However, we heard what you all said back in December, right now the CIP, which we can finalize and have to you within about a week, somewhere between 62 and 63 million dollars. Most of that being very large projects, finishing communications, finishing West Park, finishing other projects that we've got underway, some new issues. But we're, we're glad to bring the CIP to you when you're ready to look at it. The $1.7 million increase in the general fund is significant and, and we wanted to bring that to your attention. If you look at this debt service budget, the general fund will be paying off $28.2 million of principal in this budget and has about $7.9 million of interest programmed in the next year. So we do retire our debt at a very rapid rate. Only one more city that's highly rated in Tennessee that we look at pays off debt faster than Murfreesboro. So we, we think we're doing a good job managing debt. The old adage of don't borrow it if you don't need it still applies. And so we're looking at the CIP with that kind of approach.
Who's the other city? Who's that city?
Franklin.
Any questions on the debt service fund?
We'll be ready to bring CIP to you when you guys are ready to take a look at it.
I think we're ready.
Try to have it ready for you. We'll try to, I don't know that we can schedule it in with all the other budget and things going next week, but at least the week after that, we can be ready to show. Now flip forward, if you will, to 254. There are two accounts that we pay our actual capital expenses from. Capital improvement fund on 254 is primarily non-borrowed funds. These are dollars that have been contributed to the city either as donations or grants. There are three significant programs included in the capital improvement fund this year. There's the balance of the school's energy efficiency initiative. That was a, a broad program that they started over a year ago. There's still a lingering effect of that in this capital improvement fund this year. Second is the community technology center, of which the city's share is, is $900,000 and is located in this account. Last, but not least, Bloomfield Links and the construction of a pavilion at Bloomfield Links. Those three items are the principal parts of this fund for this year.
Let me add something on that. Actually, the $900,000 is just the Christie Houston share. Our match is in the bond fund.
Right. I'm sorry.
And I, I was corrected that actually, I believe now is $1.1 million that Christie Houston's going to fund as opposed to $900,000. So we'll probably come back and add a $200,000 to that. So we'll be able to spend those monies without a budget amendment. And the, the energy project is finished, but they're working on the Black Fox School addition, classroom addition. And that's what we're spending county shared bond money on now. They're expecting right now, I was told, 750,000 for the next issuance. And I think whatever's left from the Black Fox Classroom Edition project, plus this new money that we may get, could be used towards some of those projects that the schools talked about this, this afternoon, in addition to needing some CIP money.
We, we've done rough math with the schools and believe there is enough county shared to meet all of their requests on their capital that came in their operating budget.
Is that they're requested from us or they're portioned, they're paying out of their operating?
The $1.4 million that Mr. Anderson mentioned in their request from city council. We're pretty confident there's going to be enough county bond shared money to cover that $1.4 million. There'll still be the large projects that, that are in the CIP, school bus garage, next elementary school. But the items that made up that $1.4 million, we think is in the county shared fund. Page 257 starts the projects that are paid for from borrowed money. And again, these are, this is the code where those dollars are expensed. And just to run quickly through the list, most of them we've talked about in recent times. City energy efficiency program is underway, finalization of the police headquarters, the new communication system, the mainframe of the communication system that goes into the police headquarters and provides communications capability, not only to public safety, but will provide big enhancements for all the other city departments that use the radio system. Fire station number four relocation, the Young Training Center for Fire and Police, West Park gets underway, and a variety of transportation projects. If you look on page 260, the projected construction expense for this year, $72 million.
Okay.
If you've got any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
I think, I think the good thing with talking about the CIP plan, this goes hand in hand with that. So this will help, help.
Let me ask a question. I'm, I'm not sure exactly, there was some discussion with, with Ms. Holloway about how to fund or how we do these opportunities with public art projects. Are they, how are they traditionally funded? I mean, I know there's a lot of contributions from the public, you know, those kinds of things as well. But we have the roundabout, the new police building, you know, our new terminal. There's several opportunities that I think need and deserve some consideration for public art, a, a, some type of expression of asset. And it, it's going to require significant investment. And where, where do we find that? How do we fund that?
To, to date, we really haven't had a consistent method for developing a fund for public art. Even when we've begun new projects, the, the Lidle Street Roundabout, the new airport, new schools even. There, there hasn't been a consistent method for funding public art. I, I don't know how other communities are doing it, but I know they are managing to fund significant pieces of public art almost with every new project that they enter into. I know that Jennifer's been doing some research on that. She's homesick tonight. But there, there are other communities that are finding ways to place those significant pieces of public art along with their new construction projects.
I, I would like us to do some significant research into this and as a part of an addendum to maybe the budget process, have some kind of plan going forward. Cause these, these are going to be on the drawing table while some of them are already out of the ground. You know, but you know, it's time for us to start considering that, I think, from, these opportunities are, are few and they're fleeting while you have the newness of the building and in the design of the facility. I think Cynthia did address the fact of if you want to do something significant, what is that going to impact as far as landscaping and other things they're doing? So I, I think we need to be a little, you know, move this little front, front of the line so that we can have at least a plan for how we're going to address this and where the monies are going to come from and, and then we can. And then we can decide how we want to task, what we're going to put there, you know, through our committee or another, I guess, another group of citizens or something to make a decision on those things. But it, there's a, it makes a great statement about the kind of community we have that we consider public art in these new facilities that we're talking about. I'd like to see this.
I know Jennifer's done some work, but I'll get with her when she returns and see how far we've gotten and what we can bring forward.
Great, thanks.
The roundabout's going to be extremely visible heading into our downtown. It's going to be a new front door to downtown, so we want to make sure we treat it right.
You know, some of the art around the plaza, the library raised the money for the word trees that we have up along the corners of Vine and Church. And then the statues in front of the library was actually money we received donations for. A large part of it was from the Addams Family. But those are two major pieces that are here at City Hall that were donated by various citizens or foundations that were interested.
Well, I won't take long with this, but I happened to be visiting Maryville and saw a statement that they really did something that was an educational piece for, you know, schoolchildren and for the community and for tourists. It was actually, it defined, and it was about a half million dollars, I think, they spent on it. And it was some public-private contributions that did it, but it's an interpretive piece, a beautiful piece of sculpture. And, but it was, you know, it's something that you don't have an opportunity to do. The place is not there, you know, and I'd hate for us to lose this opportunity to do something really unique and special. And we talk about these other components of tourism and stuff. Making a statement with the art, public art that we are able to provide can make, really enhance how people view our community. It's not just buildings, but that aesthetic thing that art provides for us. So I, you know, I think we don't want to miss this opportunity.
And Bill, Bill, follow up on what you're saying. I think the emphasis that the city needs to do is make sure that the opportunity is being there to display art, which would be putting the bases in place to display the art on. And of course, it was mentioned earlier with the roundabout, you know, just having that one concrete surface in the center of it that is designed to have artwork mounted on it. Because Jennifer and I have had a conversation about this in the past. And I think that the university has several artisans out there that would be more than willing to loan their artwork to the city. And it almost would be beneficial if it were on a rotating basis. So once you put a piece there, that it doesn't always stay there, that it would be designed so that it could be moved to a different location so that it doesn't just become a geographic landmark of that's the corner that has the rocket on it or that's the corner that has the pioneer on it or whatever it is that you would have in your artwork. But I think the city's responsibility is to make sure that the area is provided. And then, of course, the private, I think, you know, I think there's enough artisans in Murfreesboro that would be willing to step forward and display their art that I think the expense of, you know, a half million dollar piece of artwork sounds nice, but I'm not sure that, you know, how many taxpayers would want to spend a half million dollars on a piece of artwork. So I think that...
I think the timings, I'm still a little, I'm still a little trying to stomach the whole $65 million piece of this and starting to add $500,000 for stuff. It seems like we gotta, where's it going to come from? You know, we gotta make that decision. I mean, if we want to take it away from somewhere else, fine, I'm not sure we want to borrow it.
But I think the opportunity's there. I think we just have to pursue it from more of a, let's get the places in place and the display set up so that the opportunity, when someone steps forward and says, hey, I've got a piece of artwork that I'd like to display, that we'd even have a location for it. Because I don't think today that we even have that, so. And certainly at the Chamber of Commerce and the corner of Broad and Medical Center Parkway, where we have the property there and the roundabout. I mean, there's several locations that just off the top of my head, jump forward and say, this is the perfect place to display the artwork and, you know.
Well, let me, let me just kind of make this point, because there is a paradigm shift that a community has to make. I mean, we don't necessarily think about art generally in our community. We, you know, I remember each time, whenever we had a piece up on the square that everybody had their personal opinion about. And, you know, I think this whole consideration about what art means to a community, I think we do have it. Just like we, it's a quality of life or it's a profound part of who we are that art can make a difference to a community. And I'm not so concerned that, you know, how we do that, but that we address it and that we, that we realize and value that as a statement in our community. And quite honestly, I mean, we'll probably, we'll have that discussion later as to whether how, whether we need to step up to the plate. But I personally feel that the community and government does have a place for providing some type of initiative for these things to get off the ground. I don't want to just see a concrete plaque, you know, you know, a concrete circle in the middle of our roundabout. I want to see something profound that makes a statement when people drop there. Because, you know, I want to see it, I want to see something that says something special about our community and not just put a concrete slab out there and say, well, people can put their art up there. I'm not sure, I don't believe you were saying that. But we need to be more intentional about what art means to a community. And I'm not saying that to be, you know, high falutin' or something like that, but I think it makes a big difference. And we're going to have to shift our perceptive, the, just for instance, the significant building that's in our downtown area now, the new judicial building, is making a commitment. The county is making a commitment to do an art piece in it. And it's going to be unique and special. And like I say, I hope the city, when we do our new buildings, will have that same kind of perspective as to how, how we're putting, making a statement that it means something to have something special in our, in our buildings.
And I guess with the civic plaza, you're looking at the artwork and you're going, I think that's all family-friendly artwork. I guess when you get off into art, you have to be careful because what some people consider art, some, you know, go to Nashville and do the Music City Circle. And, you know, there's a question of artwork versus whatever that is. And I think it's a whatever that is. But the, but, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of people who've made the intentions of saying, you know, we've got large pieces of artwork at MTSU that they don't have a place to display. And so it, I just...
Yeah, I don't mind having something in place for art. I'm just saying, I'm not sure we're, you know, we should add a million dollars to our debt service in order just to put something out there. I mean, if we're in a spot where we're not, where we're paying off more than we're borrowing, well, I'd be a lot more open to that conversation. But for now, I guess what I, I mean, I'm curious about what, is Jennifer working on something that's a big picture, private part, you know, public-private, or is she just saying, hey, how can we go spend a bunch of money to put up a bunch of art around town?
I know Jennifer has been working with the Standing Art Committee, the committee that meets on a regular basis. You see artwork changing.
2035 plan, I think, isn't it?
I know she's been working with him and I know she's done some research on how other communities have made that decision to pay for public art.
We actually did a field trip. I happen to serve on that committee. So we went down to the airport and I don't know if you remember, some of the public art that's down there is significant. Pieces of art that have been displayed at our, at the Nashville Airport. And how they have done, how they have provided that. And it is a public-private kind of a partnership of doing that. So, you know, it's how you put the puzzle together, every city is unique and how that happens. But, you know, I think it's a discussion that we need to have. And let's go down that field, ply that field and see how we need to do that in Murfreesboro. And if we value that, then let's find a way to make that happen. And it may be, you know, significant dollars. I mean, more than likely, it's going to be significant dollars raised from private contributions to that, the people that value that in our community and foundations and grants that are gathered to do those kind of things. I think the one at, in Maryville actually was a part of a community development kind of grant that the federal government was, had provided. And they were, had shovel-ready kind of things going that allowed them to do that. So, I mean, some of these things may be off the table as far as options for us. But if we commit ourselves to this, then I think we can find a way to make things like that happen.
All right. If we do senior citizens? Okay, we'll move to Senior Citizens Department, Agent 184.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. It's been a very busy year at St. Clair Street Senior Center. We have been under major renovation for the last nine months. We were glad as of last week to start moving staff back into the facility. We've got about two weeks, two and a half weeks of us getting things set up and ready to go that on June 12th through the 16th, we'll start doing what we call orientation tours. We already have over 500 seniors signed up as of today. We added another 100 spots this afternoon for us to have complete orientation, make sure those seniors have their paperwork and everything filled out to get things going. Hopefully, on June 19th, we'll have programming starting back. So I am putting that under our 2017 accomplishments. It's been very exciting. It's been almost a learning experience in itself of the building, its habits, the things that we'll be taking care of in the future. We can't go without saying thank you to so many different departments in the city while we have been misplaced, from the parts and wreck, from Patterson Park, also the library. We had several churches in the community that helped us out with our Adult Day Center. We had the West Main site for the training center. We took that over as our staff for a while. So I know we have been some inconvenience to some folks, but the process over there really does look fabulous. I'm really proud of it. Our staff is very proud of it to get back open, and that will be happening very soon. We also are proud that, you know, we're going to be celebrating 40-something years of serving seniors in this community. And that is something to be an accomplishment. We feel really excited to make sure that we're giving all the services that we have been asked of to perform those at the best of our abilities and make sure that we are reaching as many people as possible. Our upcoming goals for 2018 really look at a couple of things that we feel like are very important to the seniors here in Rutherford County. One is called a Master of Aging Program, which really does focus on those seniors aging into the system of what they need to be thinking of financially, medically, socially, spiritually, all of the different aspects of aging here in our communities, trying to stay relevant in not only their own lives and their own homes. But we really will take in a focus on that and having our social service department develop that. It will be an evidence-based program, so we should be able to bring back some results to this commission and council and really look at some of the aspects of really showing our seniors how to live life the best here in our community. We also have partnered with a senior social for media class. That has always been something that's been very demanding at our community. Not just computer training, we're talking laptops and Skype and I'm going into Twitterverse and all of these other, other technology centers, making digital photos, sharing those with family members, how they can do multimedia. We've even had with their music, their iPhones and even their Kindles and things like that. So we're having instructors coming in that are local, that will be teaching our seniors in small groups. We found out very quickly that large groups did not work very well. Small groups of five, where they can feel like they got their questions answered and they can go home and feel like they've accomplished something and really not be as afraid of technology. We also have spent this last six to nine months really revamping the types of programs we present at the center. We've took the time to develop a little over 102 new programming ideas, whether it be in recreation, education, physical fitness, health education that we will be introducing over the next year. It'll be focused on what we consider a PR campaign that will be based on every day is a choice for our seniors. They can commit to be fit, they can come and express themselves. They can also maintain their brain and of course, as always, as we talk about, fun is fundamental in everything that we do there at St. Clair. This PR campaign circles around our mission at the center, to be a lifelong learning center at the facility. And I think that's very important for us. It's been the mission at St. Clair for going on 30-plus years. I think our commission has really took a hard line in asking me and our staff to really take a hard look at what we do and what our mission is at our facility. A lot of our programs have changed. We've added a lot of technology in the remodel. You will see a hearing loop system that's been installed that will assist some of our seniors that have hearing aids and that capability to be able to listen to speakers. We've added technology for our presentations. We've also added technology in all of our physical fitness equipment rooms where that we can have any type of music and data and things for them to be able to do anything from tap to jazz to zumba. So we're really excited about being able to show those off. Our budget, on our budget line, we did ask for some new and additional help to be able to carry out all of these projects that we've got planned. I think we have one approved facility agent that we're going to be using as a floater that could possibly work at the front desk when we need assistance or actually do an exercise program if we train them to make sure that they're able to do those programs on their abilities and the training that we provide them. It's an exciting time to be the director at St. Clair Street. We've got a lot of new programs coming up this year. We've made a lot of changes in how our, how our staff work with our seniors. We have opened up a lot of dialogue over the last six months with them and having at least three to four public meetings with them where they've been able to come in, share some of our ideas, keep us informed of what the programs and things that they would like. Having that program committee that's actually being able to report right back to our commission on what they need. But if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Connie. All right, we'll move to the golf course department. Mr. McCurry is presenting his first budget, and I will notice that you're not wearing a short-sleeved button-up shirt and a clip-on tie.
Mayor, members of council, you kind of stole my thunder. My predecessor, Mr. Wilkins, he told me the last day he worked, he said, protocol for dress code for the golf department's a short-sleeved button-up shirt with a tie. So apologize for being out of uniform tonight. Hope you'll forgive me for that. I'll do better next time. Golf department, what a great time to be the director of the golf department of the city of Murfreesboro. The quality of course provided for our citizens, unbelievable. And golf is actually on the uptick. For the first time in about five or six years, we're continuing slight growth, especially at Old Fort. Our rounds of play, we're going to approach the low $40,000 mark again this year, which is great. We were, we call the 90s the heyday of golf. When we'd get to 44,000 rounds, we thought we would never see that again. So we're actually approaching those numbers again, which is great to see. I also want to take this time to publicly acknowledge and thank our new superintendent, Marty Mayo. He's done an outstanding job. If you haven't been out the golf course, it's, we get comments every day about how pretty and how beautiful it is, and they don't believe it's a municipal golf course. So he and his crew have done an outstanding job, along with all of our pro shop staff as well. Tournament league rounds continue to be strong. We're on about a 10% increase with our senior league and our ladies league, which is awesome. Our junior program, which is kind of our crown jewel, we've seen a 23% increase since we started that two years ago. So Jex Wilson, he's been recognized both locally and on the state level as well. Our junior program's kind of one that, you know, everybody's looking at right now. Our goals for this coming up year, we're going to, basically as a staff, our goal has been to continue to develop golf in the areas that we feel is lacking. And that's ladies golf, junior golf, and new player development. Golf is kind of... Golf has kind of went through a period of time where people, I think, felt like they weren't welcome to be at the golf course. And as golf course, people running golf courses, everybody thought people were just going to show up, pay their money and play. So we're trying to get a, get it out to the public that you are welcome to be at the golf course and wanted to be at the golf course, and there's some areas of, you know, that's been lacking that we're going to really focus on this year, make golf fun again. The USGA, which is the governing body of amateur golf, unbelievably has come up with some new programs that they're going to launch in the next two years that actually makes golf a little more player-friendly. People that are new to the game look at the rules and they're baffled sometimes by the rules of the game. So it's, we're really excited to implement some of those. We've actually already started doing that. We are going to go live this month in online tee time reservations. It's been a long time coming. Really excited about that. We think it's going to open up the doors to Old Fort, to people outside the region. So very excited about that as well. We are not asking for any personnel increases or monetary, or, you know, huge budgetary changes as far as operational goes. We are asking for a few things. Our clubhouse is now twenty years old as of this year, which is unbelievable. The flooring in it, we're asking to replace some of that as it's held up quite well, but it is, you know, in need of some repair there. Anything else? If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions for Mr. McCurry? Thank you very much, Marty. All right, we'll move to the airport fund. Page one ninety-five.
Two forty-two.
I'm sorry. Two forty-two.
Mayor and members of the council, I think you'll find it with the sky blue tab on your. This last year, we really spent a great deal of time and effort on our communication with our businesses on the field and our customers, better response time for maintenance items and things like that. I think this last year, of all the years of working here at the airport, I've never spent more time with legislative affairs. For the last thirty years, the Murfreesboro Airport, the airports across our state have been blessed with a Tennessee Aviation Fuel Equity Fund, which, and what you would see of that every year was that when we had improvement projects, we would come with ninety percent funds for hangar projects or things like that. This is now really being challenged, and that equity fund is dramatically being decreased so that what we'll see in the future is just funding for such things as pavement maintenance or things such as clearing our approaches, those types of basic projects. Other things will have to be, find funds through other means. This next, this budget is very similar to our last year's budget, but I think the, what you see beyond this budget is really in the CIP. We have a demand right now for, we have around sixty people on our tee hanger waiting list. So as you see our community grow, you see the demand at our airport continue to grow as well. So in our CIP, what you see is certainly the terminal and then some other significant projects that are going to occur. The terminal is really going to be the real nuts and bolts design is really going to start to occur over the next few months. And that is where I hope that we can look at some of the items that you have talked about tonight. Economic development as a place that, as companies come into Murfreesboro, that this is a facility that you can meet at and that we can share. I hope that when people come into Murfreesboro, if they don't even leave the terminal, they get a view of not only our airport, but the dynamic community that we live in. And I hope we can represent that somehow in this facility. Other, other projects that we have through the CIP will be dramatically improving the look of the terminal area and then also being, reaching out on the north end of the airport, which will help us meet the demand of, and the needs for such companies as Lifelight, Vanderbilt Lifelight, Air Methods and others in the future. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those at this time.
Chad, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
The IT department. Page seventy-three.
All your departments so far, we've been low-key, no PowerPoint, no, it's all getting ready to change.
Last two. Or the next two, I should say, I would.
Only thing stayed between you and dinner.
I will hurry up. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I would just like to take a few minutes to outline a few of IT's accomplishments of fiscal year 2017, and then I'll go over some of the major objectives for the upcoming year. As our city grow, continues to grow, we've noticed that requests for specialized services for our GIS department has increased. We combined them and identified the common requests received. A plan was then created and a new and improved GIS mapping solution was created and rolled out for public use. New technology has been used to capture aerial photography taken by our UAS aircraft, drone aircraft, to create three D imagery for city use, and we're incorporating that now into some of our aerial photography and mapping that we have in GIS. GIS, the GIS division continues to create solutions that aid our community, public work in planning divisions. As you can see, the augmented in virtual reality imagery that we're working on, working on with some of our projects that we have going on throughout the city. Last year, sixty PCs were identified as insufficient for business use and were replaced as per our five-year PC replacement plan. Our UAS program continues to find significant use throughout the city. You can see some of the, some of the major, some of the major points we do, water tower inspections quarterly. We had Discovery Center flight, Canterbury flight. We've done fire training flights along with fatal accident crash team callouts that we've helped reconstruct scenes. So we've helped with public safety as well as some of our utilities in their maintenance. Our IT help desk received over five thousand calls this year, with one of three calls being resolved during the first call. The IT MIS division currently has five field techs that service forty-six. Four years ago, I presented to the council an IT strategic plan, which outlined a citywide technical improvement plan for the next five to six years. This year, we have completed the implementation of our court information system and the city's first training facility. Our city, our city website is in the process of a facelift. Our new website will go live at the end of this month. Where does this leave us? Land Development Management System that Robert talked about earlier. This is a high and major priority for this next fiscal year to get business needs together from the departments that are involved and to help in identifying and implementing a new system that will automate the process of plans that, plans that go through our building codes, planning, engineering, and even our utility departments. We will continue to improve our customer service by increasing IT availability, faster response times, minimizing turnaround times and implementing a customer satisfaction survey. We'll continue to upgrade or replace network infrastructure, equipment to best support our employees' needs and to increase network security. With that, I hope for any questions.
I have a question, Mr. Leland. You said that we have forty-six buildings? I didn't realize that, that you service.
We service forty-six buildings.
You were saying that five people do that, right?
We have five field techs. We also have their supervisors that they also go out to those forty-six buildings as needed, but the field techs are the daily operations of maintenance and support.
Let's see. I had another question. When I was looking over your budget, you had, you have five hundred dollars for car allowance and mileage. What is that?
That is for reimbursement of any mileage that you use outside of, you know, in traveling to these buildings or in traveling to any type of conferences out of the, out of cycle of coming to work and going home.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you said the five hundred for mileage for traveling from building to building. You all don't use, I mean, do you use, do you have a car that you, I mean, thinking if you have a car, why would you be spending five hundred dollars for mileage?
Sometimes what we do is we'll, in cases where we have to carry a lot of equipment, we'll borrow from another, from another department, borrow a vehicle. But daily, they use their own cars.
So when you go into these forty-six buildings, the employees are using their own, their personal cars?
Yes.
So if they are calculating their mileage, seems to me that five hundred dollars is low. I mean, I don't know what the state allows for mileage.
Fifty-three and a half cents a mile, I think is what IRS, is that right?
Might be fifty-four now, I'm not sure.
Maybe fifty-three and a half.
Is it fifty-three?
You want to try lunch?
It's taped to my computer monitor, whatever it is.
Let's Google it and find out.
They're not expensing that. I did bring this up because we, we have this budget, we have this line item, and as I was looking over this year's budget and trying to figure out why we didn't, we didn't use any of this, any of this mileage reimbursement, the feedback that I did get is that it's just having to justify. Every time they go out, it was just too much. But I have spoken with them about whenever we use personal vehicles, we do need to reimburse you for your mileage. So they will be doing that going forward.
Well, if you have five people going to forty-six buildings, you can eat this up in a week. Wouldn't it be cheaper if we gave you a company car?
Could be, yes.
I mean, I would think it'd be a whole lot cheaper because, I mean, from one side of town to the other, you're looking at five or six miles. So, I mean, I can see you coming back or either going somewhere else with this budget, trying to pay for that, you know, five hundred dollars, you can use that up, I'm sure, in a month, week, right?
We probably could. It'd be good to see.
If we had an idea how much traveling they're doing, you know, if they would track their miles and turn it in or not turn it in, at least tell us how much they're using. But we have other departments that travel, we have inspectors that travel all day long and they turn in car mileage reimbursements. So we pay those. We request that they do them at least monthly. We have many that do them every week.
I was looking at also, not only that, if they're using their personal cars and putting all that heavy equipment in the cars, the wear and tear on the personal cars. That's another reason why I was thinking it'd be more feasible for wear and tear on individual cars and for the mileage to have a company car. I mean, I just thought it would be more feasible rather than putting all that heavy equipment in your personal cars.
What we'll do in those cases, we have had cases where we had a lot of equipment being moved, especially since we're, we're opening up new buildings and moving a lot of, a lot of technology and high-priced technology. What we've done is we borrowed from communications or some other department, see if we could borrow their, their vehicle during that time.
You borrow a lot?
As needed. We have been lately.
Seems like we're going to have to increase the car allowance. I mean, you know, it seems pretty obvious. We're going, you guys are going to use more than a hundred miles. So, you know, maybe what we ought to do is increase the car allowance amount, get that thing bumped up, watch that thing for a year after you have everybody turning their mileage in like they should be, and then we can start doing some estimates on what it'll cost. Is it cheaper to get a vehicle or not or whatever? I mean, after we kind of have a better handle on, it's hard to have a handle on how many miles you're using to compare that to what the cost would be of a vehicle until they start turning it in, right? So why don't we just try to get that increased a bit and let's get that there for them to use? And I guess I'd ask another question. Are we, from a liability standpoint, are we okay or, you know, I mean, people are using their own vehicles? Okay, all right. Aren't we, Rob, this, everybody, I mean, what? It just seems to me like it would be logical for that number to go up.
I agree. We're glad to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Leland.
Thank you.
I still haven't forgot Doogie Hauser either.
Yeah, I figured that's why I was at the last of, last part of the agenda.
Murfreesboro Electric Department, we have you all is next. Sorry, a little presumptive there, Mr. Gore. Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, Spark Water Management Fund.
Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight. Before I start, I just want to thank staff, city administration, Water and Sewer Board, and of course, y'all for the support that you've given us this past year. The division managers really put this budget together, and Doug is really the primary assembler of getting all this compiled. And I just kind of get up here and get to show you some, the summary of it and maybe write some of the narrative. So we're excited to, I don't know what that blue is.
Why'd you put that squiggly line?
I don't know what that thing is there. How do you clear this, Chris?
It's actually on Chris's presentation, too.
It was on Chris.
Oh, don't tell him that!
This thing is, did you start writing on the screen?
Oh, it's been there.
It's been there the whole time.
It's been there.
Sorry. He's messing with you.
I didn't do this on purpose.
I knew it would get you.
Unless y'all want me to eat like three more bags of chips, I'd say we'll just leave it there.
It's not a racist.
All right, I'll deal with it.
Hey, Darren, I don't know if, Darren, I don't know if anybody's mentioned, but there's a blue squiggly line on it.
My OCD is going to get the best of me here, but, yeah. So thank everybody again for the support that you've given us this past year. Want to try to go through the numbers just to give everybody an idea of where we are on revenue and expenses. We're looking at around forty-three point eight million dollars in sales revenue, water and sewer. We also have TAP revenue, system development charges and some other income, close to, you know, eight million dollars, six point seven million plus about another seven hundred thousand there. When you look at the expenses, we have about twenty-one point four million in our admin billing collection, water O and M and sewer O and M. We've got about five point nine million on capital expenditures, thirteen point four on debt service, and then we have a transfer of about ten point four million to our reserves. The six point seven million TAP revenue is a direct transfer into our savings. Where we are with water revenue, we're up, we're looking at about a four and a half percent increase from last year's budget, three percent from projected. This has to do with removing our minimum allowance on one inch in larger meters. On the sewer, we're actually down about a half a percent on projected sales revenue. This is primarily because of General Mills being, going to be sending about half a million gallons a day over to Indian Hills Golf Course. That is a pretty big revenue reduction for us, but it's, I'll highlight it in a minute. It's really a triple bottom line win for all parties involved. The TAP revenue, again, this is kind of just, this is trying to predict growth. We've bumped it up about seven hundred thousand from last year's budget and a little bit less than what we've projected this year. Again, this is, this revenue goes, comes straight in, it's an in and an out. It comes in as a revenue and we put it back into our working capital reserve account. Total expenses, really the two main items that have increased this year are going to be the debt service. This is based on our fifty-five million dollar CIP. We're coming to the tail, tail end of that. It's up about ten percent. And of course, the transfer to reserves is up because of, we're anticipating a higher TAP fees coming in. Everything else is flat or decreased. Our positions by division, we are asking for four new full-time equivalents, full-time employees. Two of those that are operation and maintenance, they're CCTV technicians. These are the inspectors that run the CCTV trucks that actually inspect the interior of the sewer lines, help us identify rehabilitation projects. In engineering, we're looking at GIS mapping technician and an EIT, engineering and training. We've had Valerie Smith basically pulling the full load by herself for quite some time and, and she really needs that support. Stormwater revenues, again, we're looking around two point nine million in stormwater fees. And we have about, wrote that total down, excuse me, one point six eight million, what I would call these is more as operating expenses. We have about three hundred and sixty-five thousand in rate-funded capital assets. That's primarily for streets, department, equipment for their operations. And we have a earmarked two hundred and fifty thousand for repair and replacement. And then again, we have about a six hundred thousand dollar excess that we take and we put into our reserve account. This shows kind of how the reserve account has, has been depleted, which is a good thing, I think, over the past few years. We're looking at dropping about twelve, twelve percent and sixteen and a half percent over the next couple of years. Means we're spending, spending the money and working on good projects. And that's primarily with the help of our city engineering and streets department. Our accomplishments, we have completed our AMI infrastructure wireless meter reading project. We've completed our bio, biosolids lime stabilization pilot study out at the water resource recovery facility. We developed septic tank effluent system design guidelines for inside city service. We facilitated the triple bottom line win, which is that Indian Hills irrigation system using General Mills effluent. General Mills actually receives reduced expense. Indian Hills has a steady revenue source. We lose that revenue, but we gain capacity in our system. So that's really why I'm calling that a win, a triple win there. And we are, we were recognized as utility of the future today by some national organizations and the EPA. Our A F Y eighteen goals, we want to rebrand our water and sewer department to the water resources department. Bring our Phase Four D Stones River Water Resource Recovery Facility online. It's expected to occur in October. Continue to develop our new two thousand and twenty-one National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Rationale using our exemplary Stones River bio-assessment results. And open up the AMI web portal to customers, allowing water budgeting and, and allowing them to see consumption activity. Gain momentum in the Help to Others Customer Assistance Program participation and finalize our department's long-term planning document, our Water Resource Integration Plan. I would say that as far as our accomplishment goes, we do have a pretty big benchmarking section in our budget. It's on page thirty-one. It kind of gives you a really good idea of how we, how we fall amongst our peers. That's a national survey that we participate in every year and it kind of shows you where we, where we're strong, mediocre, and maybe a little bit weak. And that's really it. I'm available for questions. I know that was fairly quick and a lot of numbers, but.
Any questions for Mr. Gore? Could you let us know by the time you come back how to get that blue squiggly?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to. If Chris couldn't figure it out, he did exactly what I was gonna do, so I don't know how to get it off there. Sorry.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Last but not least, have Mr. Minnet with MED.
I truly am the only thing keeping you from dinner, aren't I? Mayor, members of city council, I'm pleased to submit Murfreesboro Electric Department's fiscal year eighteen budget. As y'all know, this is our first budget submittal to the city council and we're excited to have this opportunity to share details of our operations, our goals and accomplishments with you. And because this is our first submittal and introduction to our budgeting process, we've, we've given you a lot of information this year, probably more than you really need, but some of it's historical. There's appendices with a number of reports for your review to so we hope these materials will prove useful and helping you understand that our operations and how we've evolved as we look toward the future. I've got a short PowerPoint. I was told to be brief, so I'll try to move through this rather quickly. Talk a little bit about our accomplishments for fiscal year seventeen. Reliability and responsibility. We maintained the system reliability this past year of ninety-nine point nine nine four four percent. That's a number we're extremely proud of. Basically, that represents of all the minutes available for, for power, we were, power was on ninety-nine point nine nine four four percent. This is due to a lot of factors, primarily long-term system planning, investment in reliability-enhancing technologies, a strong commitment to maintenance, and a dedicated staff. And of course, y'all know that reliability of our power system is critical to the city's economic vitality, well-being of its citizens, so we put a lot of stock in that number. Our goal for next year is five nines. I mean, that's always our goal. We're striving, striving to get to that, to that number. Our financial strength is another source of pride. I think our financial strength is unparalleled in the valley. Last year, for the second year in a row, we absorbed the TVA wholesale increase. That saved our customers about four point eight million dollars over the past two years. Safety is priority one for, for Murfreesboro Electric and this year we earned a perfect safety audit score. We did a customer satisfaction survey for the first time this year. We had six hundred customers respond. We received very high ratings for ease of doing business, perceived value and overall satisfaction from those customers. Pretending to system growth, we energized the Veterans Park substation in December twenty sixteen, which provides additional capacity to serve the growing needs in western Murfreesboro. That station cost was about six, about six million dollars. We hired a new IT director recently to lead us in toward our technology and cybersecurity initiatives, which are becoming more and more important. A lot of new security issues that are, that are coming down the pike in twenty eighteen on our electric system. Some financial highlights for seventeen, we had about a hundred and sixty-five million in revenue, net income of about eight point four million. We've got about a hundred and forty-one million dollars in net plant, total assets of about two hundred and thirty million dollars. Yet our debt's only six point three five million. That's something we're very proud of, very fiscally sound.
Hey PD, one kind of question on that last slide. Just, it looks like your budget is for net income to be around five, five and a half million.
This was projected for this current year. The eight point eight is for, I mean, the eight point four is current year.
Why is it going to five million next year?
Yes, sir. Well, why?
Why, yeah.
Well, we absorbed the rate increase for the past two years, so unless we, unless we raise rates, we've lost that revenue going forward. But, you know, because of our financial strength, that was a decision we made the past two years and certainly can absorb that. Our cash position is very strong. And going forward, we're anticipating spending that down some. Depreciated value of our system is thirty-two percent. The reason I put that number in there is, is that's a very low number. Most systems are fifty to sixty percent depreciated. Our rate consultant said we were the youngest system he'd ever worked on and he's done five or six hundred rate studies, which basically means we're, our system's current. We've got new technology, new equipment. We're maintained well and that's a real plus going forward. Our bad debt expense is five one-hundredths of a percent. Tax payments to the city, a little over three million dollars, and to the county, just under a million dollars. Before we, before I can continue on into the goals, I was gonna talk about the, into your budget book a little bit. For fiscal eighteen, we we budgeted about a hundred and seventy-four million in revenues. Total expenses are about a hundred and sixty-eight point five. Most of that is purchased power, about a hundred and forty-three million dollars. About eighty-four cents of every dollar sold goes back to TVA and purchased power. We operate on the other sixteen cents. We're projecting to add about sixteen million to plant this year. Capital expenditures, we've got about nine point three million capital projects. We're, we're adding about six hundred and eighty thousand transportation equipment, information technology, about two hundred and ten thousand meters and transformers, about five and a half million. And then SCADA and substations, about a quarter million dollars. Expansion, we've begun construction on a new substation on the gateway area on Robert Rose Drive. This will serve the hospital, the Oaks, provide additional redundant capacity in that area. We're, we're gonna purchase land this year for our new headquarters. We've outgrown our facility downtown. And we're gonna begin design of a new facility to accommodate our system growth this year. We're gonna continue our fiber project. We're gonna connect all of our substations on the south side of the city to our fiber loop. Currently, we have about thirty-three and a half miles of fiber installed in the city with plans to add about another twenty-five and a half miles in the next five years. Technology, I mentioned that we're gonna spend about five and a half million dollars on meters and transformers. We, we're gonna replace about forty-eight thousand residential meters over the next two years. We were one of the first distributors to install spark metering back in two thousand and four. And so the life of that, those meters have pretty much exceeded. When we put those in, we could read every meter once a day. The new meters have capacity that we'll read those hourly. May lead to time of use billing. The, in addition, the new meters will all have disconnect devices under the glass so that we can remote turn any meter on or off, or collections, new service. That'll save us a lot of money in terms of rolling out trucks. Also, a safety issue on collections, having to go out in the field. Fiber security, I mentioned that the NERC requirements have increased considerably for the electric grid. So we're, we're doing a lot of work in terms of our SCADA system, our substations, to beef up security in our, in our distribution system. We set really high standards for the organization. The RP three is reliable public power accreditation. That's a national honor that APPA gives out. Only about two hundred utilities have achieved that status. We'll be applying for it again this year. It's a three-year accreditation and we've had it for the past nine years. Safety, we mentioned it was priority one. Our goal is to place in the top tier of APPA's Award for Excellence program this year. Finally, communication, we want to continue to strengthen our relationship with the council, the other city departments, and ensure that the MED continues to power the progress of Murfreesboro. And I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize and thank our dedicated employees. Open for questions.
The only thing I would, and this is, I don't think it's, it's a good spot to be in, but the one thing I think maybe talking about moving forward, I think it's great to eat that rate increase to TVA, but the thing I, I would maybe warn that if we're, I think it was thirteen, we're fourteen million in revenue. This year, this year we're projecting to be down to five million, which is two hundred percent. You know, I'm, you know, Mr. Gore may, I'm not sure, we've gone to get to where we're zero on giving away water, but the only thing I would say is sometimes it's better to not increase rates in a environment where, that the economy's not as good as opposed to right now, increasing rates that find that flood, where that, that midpoint is. But I know y'all have got plenty, or the MED has plenty of cash, but something, that may be something to look at.
Let me, let me clarify that in this budget, the assumption for this year, we're assuming TVA will probably take about a two percent wholesale increase in October when they start their new fiscal year. We plan to pass that through as a non, as a revenue neutral pass-through. We, we absorbed the past two years, but this year we, we plan to pass that through.
Okay.
As you know, from being on our board, our cash position is very strong. Cash ratio is, is in very good position, so we, from a regulatory standpoint, we probably need to, to spin that down a little bit.
Did I just catch that right? Eighty-four, eighty-four cents of every dollar it goes to pay for the TVA?
That's correct. Then leave us a lot to work with.
Gee whiz. And you operate on sixteen cents?
Yes, sir.
PD, I want to say pretty efficient, but this is phenomenal. Y'all did a great job putting that together, especially for the first year. This, y'all really have done a good job.
Well, thank you very much. Department head, staff did a great job pulling this together. I'm trying to tell them how much it's appreciated.
Robin, PD, the only question that he had asked me jokingly, I'm, I'm kidding. When the road, when are the roads gonna be finished in front of MED? He didn't want to ask that, but I'll ask.
I know the parking garage is getting ready to, be ready to be opened. It's, there's a lot of stuff torn up up there. There really is.
PD, do you get to hear the same hammer every day that I hear?
Every day I get the drumbeat. I'm used to it now. But it, it is, I see a lot of people walking up the drive. I don't know where they're parking. I mean, they're coming from everywhere right now because there's nowhere to park. We only have seven to start with, so, plus without Walnut Street.
I, I ought to do better because the mayor and Mr. Leland both work directly adjacent to this project.
Daily reminder.
In addition, everybody else who's downtown.
I don't, don't. They're just waiting for the roads to get finished.
We think it might, it might open up some of our other payment portals. People start using our, playing over the IVR, using our mobile smart hub and so walking in right now is coming ordeal.
All right, any questions? I don't see anyone wishing to speak at the public comment section that.
We actually moved that a week, Mayor.
Okay, great. Even better. I thought it was, we were doing it. All right, any questions for staff? All right. Thanks, staff, for all your hard work. We appreciate y'all staying, staying late and getting everything. All right, thanks staff for all your hard work, we appreciate y'all staying, staying late and getting everything done. We'll stand adjourned.